Thirteenth, 2022 afternoon session of the Portland City Council. Kealan, good afternoon, please call the roll.
Good afternoon, Ryan.
Here.
Hardesty.
Here.
Maps.
Here.
Rubio.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here, we have one item for this afternoon. Oh, actually, why don't we hear from legal counsel and the rules supporter and decorum?
Good afternoon. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the council clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions, reports, or the first readings of ordinances. The published council agenda at www-portland.org/council/agenda contains information about how and when you may sign up for testimony while the city council is holding electronic meetings. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When your time is up, the presiding officer will ask you to conclude. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruptions may result in the person being placed on hold or ejected from the remainder of the electronic meeting. Please be aware that all council meetings are recorded.
Very good, thank you. Colleagues, again, I apologize, you cannot see me today. There's something wrong with the camera, it's not responding, but at least you can hear me, that's the important thing. We have one item this afternoon, Kealan, item number two eighty-four, please.
Um, I think we're-
I'm sorry, two eighty-three.
Yes, okay, thank you there. Adopt the FY 2021-22 Spring Supplemental Budget and make other budget-related changes.
Very good, well, welcome everyone. Today, council will vote on our Spring 2022 Budget Monitoring Process Package, also known as the Spring Bump, or sometimes just our Spring Budgeting Process. As a reminder, the Spring Bump is one of three major budgeting processes that the city undergoes each year, and it's historically comprised of true-ups and relatively small programmatic changes. These funds must be spent or encumbered by the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th of this year. Any funds not spent or encumbered by June 30th will fall into the ending fund balance. During last Wednesday's council work session, as you'll recall, we went line by line with the city budget office to review my proposed Spring Bump Package, which included programs and projects put forward by each of the bureaus. After reviewing bureau budget requests, a little over $5 million in unrestricted contingency and about $4.4 million in policy set-aside reallocations remained for a grand total of about $9.4 million. Last week's review also included a handful of new appropriations that I brought forward to meet urgent recovery needs with focus on the upcoming summer months in particular. I want to express my thanks once more to my colleagues for their thoughtful engagement and collaboration on several of the items within my proposed budget. The proposed budget allows us to meet immediate recovery needs while staying in alignment with our shared priorities of addressing homelessness, improving community safety, and supporting shared economic recovery and prosperity. We will continue to thoughtfully engage today as each commissioner proposes amendments to the bump package that would tap into the remaining $9.4 million of resource. I want to be clear, though, that city budget officer, budget office director Jessica Kennard has recommended that we reserve $4 million of the $9.4 million for personnel contingency and current-year labor costs, leaving about $5.4 million remaining. I want to be clear that I agree with this recommendation. It's important to note that what we choose to carry over today, rather than fund with the available $5.4 million, provides us with crucial resources later as we go into the annual budget process in the days ahead. I'm working to develop my proposed budget for fiscal year 2223, which is comprised primarily of one-time general funds as well as ARPA requests. How we spend resources today will directly impact if and how we're able to invest in more robust packages within the coming fiscal year budget. We received requests for two to four times over the forecasted available resources for multiple revenue streams. For example, we received $210.7 million in ARPA requests, whereas we only have $104 million to allocate. Similarly, we received about $30 million in requests for capital set-aside, but we only have half that much, $15 million, available. We received almost $39 million in requests from bureaus for one-time-only funds, but we're forecasting that we'll have less than $14 million to allocate. And finally, we received a little bit over $27.8 million in requests from bureaus for ongoing general funds, $27.8 million for ongoing, but we only have $200,000 available. As such, the available resources today will be critical in balancing our upcoming fiscal budget. We have far more requests than what we can fulfill, and all available resources are critical. We need to ensure that all bump amendments focus on funding our most immediate needs within this limited timeframe. That said, I look forward to hearing from each commissioner as we work together to pass this package. Before I turn this over to Director Kennard, I want to quickly review the order of events for today, just so we're all on the same page. So Director Kennard will review the Spring Supplemental Budget Ordinance, then council will introduce and second amendments for consideration, after which time we will hear public testimony. We have about eighteen people signed up to testify today, as I understand it. Once public testimony is complete, council will then deliberate and vote on the amendments that have been put forth. Director Kennard, please go ahead and take us through the Spring Supplemental Budget Ordinance as well as the amendments from council. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, members of the council. For the record, my name is Jessica Kennard, I am the city's budget director, and I'm here with Robert Cheney and Jane Marie Ford from the city budget office who coordinate our supplemental budget process. Robert, if you could please advance the slide. So the mayor just provided an overview of the agenda for today. I will provide a high-level overview of the Spring Bump. I will then walk through the general fund contingency balances and provide a very high-level summary of the filed ordinance. We walked through what is included in the ordinance as filed last week during the Spring Bump work session, so I won't spend a lot of time on it, but I will be available to answer questions if there are any. Then, as the mayor mentioned, we will put amendments on the table and have them seconded for testimony and discussion. And if it's, if it's all right with the council, it's been suggested that I be the one that run through those amendments and enter them into the record. If any commissioner would like to be the one that puts them on the record themselves, please just raise your hand when we get to that point in the agenda, and I'll be sure to turn it over to you. We will take public testimony, full discussion, and then finally have voting on amendments in the overall package. Next slide, please. So as the mayor alluded to, the Spring Bump, also known as the supplemental budget process, is primarily meant to be a technical process that is focusing on ending the year in balance. So we have a fiscal year that runs from July 1st to June 30th. This point in fiscal year, we're just looking towards that June 30th end date, making sure that we're ending the year in balance, doing a number of technical true-ups. Bureaus may request carryovers for funds, particularly in the general fund, to make sure that they can retain resources into next fiscal year to complete projects that were approved in prior budget processes. Bureaus also are able to ask for general fund compensation set-aside to cover current year personnel costs. They may recognize unbudgeted revenue, and then additionally, general fund contingency resources may be allocated to address urgent needs and/or prevent year-end overspending. Next slide, please. This is a high-level overview of the timeline that we have gone through over the past several weeks. The Spring Bump is a very condensed timeline, and it happens at the same time as we're developing the annual budget, and so there's a lot going on. The thing to focus on again is that we are talking right now about the current year budget, whereas in annual budget development, we're talking about the budget that's going to be starting on July 1st. For this particular process, bureaus submitted their requested changes to the current year budget on March 17th. Our office reviewed all of those requested changes, we made sure that they were technically accurate, we reviewed requests for general fund contingency and issued analysis and recommendations on April 4th. We had a council work session on April 5th, and the mayor also filed his proposed bump ordinance on that same date. In the last week, we have been working with council offices to identify and construct amendments that we will discuss today, and then, of course, here we are on 13th at our Spring Bump hearing. Next slide, please. So prior to the Spring Bump, before embarking on this process, we had some available general fund contingency resource that we had set aside for our anticipated needs in the current year, and that includes our compensation set-aside account. This is funding that is meant to support the cost of living, cost of living adjustments for general fund-supported employees. Every year, we set this money aside in a central account, and if bureaus are fully staffed throughout the course of the year, it is likely that they will need this resource in order to end the year on budget. Apologies, I have a light going on and off. And so, and so when bureaus, there's an amount set aside for each bureau, and if a bureau is fully staffed, they may request this fund, and the funds will be allocated as part of the Spring Supplemental Budget. Additionally, this year, because we had a number of personnel-related anticipated costs due to labor bargaining conversations, as well as late sort of additions in last year's adopted budget with respect to COLA and merit increases, we set aside a little over $12 million in the fall to make sure that we had sufficient resources to cover these anticipated labor costs. And we made those resources available to bureaus if they required them to stay in budget throughout the course of this fiscal year. We also started this process with $3 million in unrestricted contingency and $12.4 million in policy set-aside. Now, policy set-aside are funds that are earmarked by the council for specific purposes. So there's a number of different purposes that are part of that group, but they all totaled to $12.4 million before the Spring Bump was filed. Next slide, please. So at a high level, the mayor's proposed supplemental budget as filed, the ordinance that you are considering today, includes the following allocations of general fund contingency. So it includes about $3.85 million of new general fund allocations, as well as an allocation of current-year contingency of federal ARPA resources. The line item detail for those, for that $3.85 and that $2.9 is listed below, and I'm not going to walk through each of those, we talked about each of them last week, but just for transparency's sake, I've included each of those items below. The items with asterisks are the ARPA contingency, the items that were funded with ARPA contingency. In addition to these items that have been funded in what has been filed, there was also $9.86 million of labor costs, of funding for labor costs that have been allocated and what's been filed by the mayor. And then finally, there was about $650,000 of funding that was taken from the earmarked policy set-aside accounts and allocated to bureaus to fund those specific things that had been, that the funding had been set aside for. Next slide, please. Another large category of changes that we discussed and walked through line by line last week were general fund program carryovers. And as I mentioned last week, this year, we had a number of carryovers, more carryovers than we typically do, largely because there was a large amount of one-time general fund resource that was allocated either in the adopted budget or in the fall bump, which was only passed four months ago. And so bureaus are just simply needing a little more time to finish the projects that they have been approved for and that they have, in many cases, begun work for, but they're not going to finish before June 30th. So you'll see that $10.9 million has been filed to be carried over for those existing approved projects. And in addition, bureaus have taken the opportunity to identify funds that they don't anticipate meeting throughout the end of the fiscal year and are asking to have those funds carried over for the items that they would like to see funded in next year's budget process. So those are new things in next year's budget process that will be funded through underspending, and $5.1 million of those types of packages are currently included in what the mayor has proposed and what you all are considering today. Next slide, please. So with the changes that are included in the ordinance in front of you, this is where we stand with our contingency balances. So the mayor referenced this in his opening remarks. I think we had, we looked closely at the digits, we ended up with a little bit of a rounding change in terms of the overall available resource is $9.5 million in both personnel contingency and unrestricted contingency balances. As the mayor mentioned, our office has recommended we hold some of that back. Specifically, I would like to, I would recommend to hold about $2.5 million of contingency for current-year costs, mainly keeping an eye on some of our potential overtime costs that we may incur throughout the end of the year and other sort of unforeseen expenses. In addition, as we talked about at the work session, there is an opportunity, we are currently in bargaining with some of our labor partners, and there could be an opportunity to set aside some money to proactively plan for some of those costs, which would be fiscally prudent if possible. Then we have our policy set-aside, $16 million for program carryover. This is simply just reflecting the amount of funding that is being taken out of the current year's budget that will be put into next year's budget to support those program carryovers that I discussed on the prior slide. And then finally, we are left with about $12.6 million in other policy set-aside accounts. Next slide, please. All right, and so if there, I will pause and see if there are any questions on the ordinance that you are considering before going through the proposed amendments. No questions at this time. I will begin putting the amendments on the table. So as I understand it, I will, I will read an amendment, and I will listen for, let's see, do I, do I listen for a second?
I was just going to ask that, are you expecting to just vote to have the amendment on the table, and we're not going to discuss them until after public testimony? Is that accurate?
That's, that's correct, Commissioner Hardesty. So Director Kennard, if I could suggest the following, why don't you introduce each of the amendments? And upon completion of the introduction, ask if there is a, well, I'll ask if there's a motion in a second, and then we'll leave them open for the discussion as well as public testimony. So why don't we go ahead and just introduce the amendments one by one, and if commissioners would like to chime in on any of them, they're certainly welcome to do so, and then we'll seek a motion in a second.
Thank you, Mayor, that sounds great. All right, so we will begin with the mayor's office. So Mayor One is a motion to make the following adjustments to supplemental budget as proposed to include carryover funds for the hearings office. So this amendment would decrease bureau program expenses in the Office of Management and Finance General Fund by $50,000 to be carried over into fiscal year 2223 to address a projected funding gap in the hearings office due to reduced revenue from Title VI toll-appeal hearings. It would then increase general fund policy set-aside for the program carryover to balance this change. The update exhibits one through five as needed to reflect this change, and I will just share that this does not affect general fund contingency, it is a carryover of currently available resources into next year.
Yeah, and Director, if I could just add a little color commentary here as well. This was originally submitted as an ARPA ask that they have unused revenue that they can carry over for this purpose, and that's, that's the purpose of this amendment. So I move the amendment as you describe it.
I second.
Commissioner Hardesty, seconds.
Great. Then we have Mayor Two, which is a motion to make the following adjustments to the supplemental budget as proposed to include additional funds for summer events. This would increase bureau program expenses in Prosper Portland's general fund by $200,000 to grant to Venture Portland to distribute to community events citywide. It would reduce general fund unrestricted contingency by $200,000 to support this request. And this would bring the total allocation, the total allocated to summer events in the Spring Supplemental Budget to $635,000. This includes approximate sponsorship appropriations for the following organizations. Blues Festival, $100,000, Rose Festival, $90,000, Juneteenth, $10,000, Oregon Brewers Festival, $75,000, Pride, $100,000, Paseo, $10,000, Pedal Palooza, $50,000, and then Venture Portland, up to $200,000 for events outside of Central City. We will update exhibits one through five as needed to reflect the change.
And I want to thank Commissioner Hardesty for encouraging us during last week's work session to consider how we can ensure we're providing events, for events outside of the Central City. Of course, we had already agreed to some of the larger ones in the package that are some of the stalwarts, for example, the Rose Festival, the Blues Festival and whatnot. But I want to thank Commissioner Hardesty for working with community and businesses to ensure that these funds are provided to events citywide. Commissioner Hardesty, did you want to say anything on this one?
It's just been a move, Mayor.
Second, Commissioner Hardesty moves. I'll second. Commissioner Ryan has a question. Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, I apologize for asking, I might be embarrassed. I was tracking the numbers, and what I'm seeing is 200,000 total. Is that correct?
No.
Oh, I have an old document, sorry. What did you say? Director Kennard, what's the number on that?
The total value is 635,000.
Okay, I was gonna say, it was totaling way more than the number I got. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Commissioner Ryan, the confusion there is this, this is in addition to the package that was originally proposed, so this adds the $200,000 through Venture Portland for events citywide, so that you-
Thank you for making sense of my confusion, I appreciate it.
You have every reason to be confused by that. So we have a motion from Commissioner Hardesty, second from Mayor.
All right, we are going to move to amendments that are offered by Commissioner Rubio. Commissioner Rubio One is motion to make the following adjustments to the supplemental budget as proposed in order to maximize the 2020 Parks Local Option Levy to meet voter-approved goals and make full use of the general fund currently allocated to the bureau. This will increase bureau program expenses in Portland Parks and Recreation General Fund by $917,233 to support budgeted personnel costs. We will reduce the general fund compensation set-aside account by $917,233 to fund the change, and we'll update exhibits one through five as needed to reflect the change.
Are we saying something about it now, each person, or?
You can, or if there's a motion, I'll accept the motion, it's your time.
Okay, I'll, I'll say something now, just for the sake of it. Mayor, colleagues, I offer this amendment to ensure this council keeps its promise to voters. We ask voters to provide funding for our parks and recreation services above and beyond what the general fund supports. This amendment does that. It allows parks to spend general fund already allocated to the bureau, and it is not additional general fund resources. I'm simply asking that to meet the intent of the voters, so that we should fully utilize the currently allocated general fund, including set-asides, to avoid substituting general fund with levy funds. And because of the levy, Parks is working to ramp up services at the exact time that our community and economy continues to open up. Parks and the recreation services are an important part of a strong economy. And later, we have Claudio from Parks to answer any follow-up questions. Thank you.
So Commissioner Rubio, would you like to move when I'll second?
Yes, thank you. I move to support this, or to, I move this amendment.
I second.
Commissioner Rubio moves, Commissioner Hardesty seconds.
Thank you. Moving along to amendments offered by Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Ryan One is a motion to make the following adjustments to the supplemental budget as proposed to fund the acquisition of land to preserve affordable housing. This would increase bureau program expenditures in the Portland Housing Bureau Housing Investment Fund by $3.5 million to fund land acquisition for affordable housing purposes. We would reduce the general fund policy set-aside by $600,000 to restore carryover from the Portland Housing Bureau to help fund this request, then increase general fund unrestricted contingency to make these resources available for expenditure in the current year. Increase cash transfer expenses from the general fund to the Housing Investment Fund by $3.5 million, and reduce general fund unrestricted contingency by $3.5 million to fund this change, and then update exhibits one through five as needed to reflect this change. So commissioners, I will just share with you, that's a lot of technical language. What we're doing here, the request is for $3.5 million. However, we already had $600,000 that was budgeted in the fall bump that is being proposed to partially fund this change. So what is happening is we're removing a program carryover that had been included in the filing, and that will partially offset the draw-on contingency. And so the draw-on contingency is actually $2.9 million, even though the project would be funded at $3.5 million.
Thank you, Director Kennard. Just to add, the city, on this amendment, the city must use all the tools we have in our toolbox for event displacement. And as said, we made a $16 million ASPS in ARPA funding, and if this request passes, we reduce the ARPA request. We have a very narrow window to move forward with this land acquisition in the next few months, which is why we're presenting this ASPS today. We're currently in dialogue and partnership negotiations, and we appreciate the full council support in these efforts. I move this amendment forward.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Ryan, a second from Commissioner Hardesty.
All right, moving along to Ryan Two, which is a motion to make the following adjustments to the supplemental budget as proposed to restore Development Services workforce levels. This would increase bureau program expenses in the Bureau of Development Services in the Development Services Fund by $2.3 million to hire additional staff. We would increase limited-term position authority in the Bureau of Development Services by 12 FTE. We would then increase cash transfer expenses from the general fund to Development Services Fund by $2.3 million, and we would reduce general fund unrestricted contingency by $2.3 million to fund this change, and we would update exhibits one through five as needed to reflect the change.
Thank you, Director Kennard. Add a little bit more narrative to this amendment. In March 2021, the Bureau of Development Services reduced- Thank you, Director Kennard. Add a little bit more narrative to this amendment. In March twenty-twenty-one, the Bureau of Development Services reduced its workforce by twelve. Full-time FT employees as a result of financial impacts related to COVID-nineteen pandemic and reduced revenue and its workload outlook projected at that time. It's important we receive this funding now so that Portland is better positioned to serve our customers today. Thank goodness they're coming back. Agility is a key here and we know that economic recovery is one of the city's top three priorities and this allows us to not miss a beat. What we've learned in the permit improvement process is that we have to improve services on the ground. And it does take twelve to eighteen months to train people in these very specialized positions. And so I move this amendment forward.
I, I, I have a question. I'll second it. But I think I have a question, Commissioner Ryan. My understanding was that Bureau of Developmental Services was held harmless when other bureaus had budget cuts. So it's gonna be really hard for me to support twelve positions in a bureau. That actually since twenty-twenty, when other bureaus were facing severe financial crisis, that we held this bureau harmless. I don't know where their twelve staff that they lost. I don't know where that came from. So that's gonna be a longer conversation. But I'm very concerned that we would overload staff in that bureau, knowing that there are other bureaus that equally need staff. Thank you.
You're welcome. I know that when we, are we gonna get into that dialogue now? Cause I.
Why, why don't, it sounds.
We'll do it later.
Yeah, it sounds like Commissioner Hardesty seconded this for purposes discussion. So.
Okay.
Moves Hardesty second. So we'll, we'll discuss all of these after public testimony.
Sounds good. Got it.
Testifying have thoughts on these. We'd certainly like to hear those thoughts as well. Go ahead, Director Kennard, next one.
Alright, moving along to Ryan Three. It's a motion to make the following adjustments to the supplemental budget as proposed to begin hiring staff for multi-bureau process improvement efforts. And this would increase bureau program expenses in special appropriations by a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for additional personnel costs. We would increase limited term position authority in special appropriations by three FTE. We would then reduce general fund unrestricted contingency by a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to fund this change. And we would update exhibits one through five as needed to reflect this change.
Thank you, Director Kennard. For some background, in March twenty-twenty-one, the BDS audit revealed the building permit process in Portland is frustratingly slow. The audit report matches scathing feedback from residents, business owners, low-income housing providers and developers. Customers expect and deserve timeliness, predictability, consistency and ease in access and customer responsiveness. The absence of such efficient customer-related centered processes, residents and developers either wait or angrily complain. Or find ways to work around our broken processes, impacting livability, the economy and damaging our city's reputation. Historically, the mission of BDS and the mission of other inter-agency permitting bureaus has not been aligned. And there is no centralized authority or accountability. And the number one impact is customer service. Thankfully, last spring, Commissioner Maps and I joined forces to establish Permit Improvement Task Force. Which includes bureaus involved in the building permitting processes. That includes many, including development services, environmental services, fire and rescue, transportation, urban forestry and water. The overall goal of the task force is to reduce permit turnaround times from intake to approval and to increase the efficiency of the permitting process in Portland. In April twenty-twenty-one, the Permit Improvement Task Force was assembled, which included. The two of us, two commissioners, Commissioner Maps and I, six permitting bureau directors, fifteen staff from bureaus, fourteen members of the development community. And thankfully, eight members from the, all five council offices. Last May, I worked with my colleagues on council to allocate budget to staff one person to manage this work. In August of twenty-twenty-one, Terry Tyson was hired to serve as Permit Improvement Strategies Manager. She supports the Permit Improvement Task Force and is in this work to improve the delivery. Of efficient and streamlined development and review services for the multiple stakeholders. And homeowners making repairs, businesses making tenant improvements and to new construction of affordable housing. The hiring of a Permit Improvement Manager was phase one of this project. Now we are honored to support the Permit Improvement Process. A few outcomes include. A consolidation of silent efforts, increased efficiencies in technology, human resources and communication. Implementation of one point to contact customer with clear decision-making or equitable access for customers. Sharing technology all across the bureaus. Ability to adapt to shifts in volume and staffing with a holistic process of policy code development. Implementation and assessment of impact and clear assignment of responsibility and authority. The final outcome is to move the conceptual structure and regulatory reforms agreed upon and recommended by the task force. To the development of a strategic business plan, ready for implementation. I encourage my colleagues to support this process as we work together to ride the momentum of all the good work that we built together over this past year of the Permit Improvement Task Force. And that's the motion I bring forward.
I second.
Commissioner Hardesty seconds. Commissioner Ryan's amendment.
Great. So there is, there is one more item that is co-sponsored, I believe, by Commissioner Ryan and Commissioner Maps and it's on the Maps list. So I don't want you to think I'm forgetting that, Commissioner Ryan. We're going to move along to amendments from Commissioner Hardesty's office. So we have Commissioner Hardesty One is a motion to make the following adjustments to the supplemental budget as proposed. In order to align the Office of Community and Civic Life's carryover request as originally requested for planned strategic planning needs. This would, I'm sorry, it says the spring supplemental budget as filed includes four hundred thousand dollars in carryover for two-year strategic planning. And two hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars for neighborhood small grants in the Office of Community and Civic Life's General Fund. This amendment reallocate the two hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars in funding for neighborhood small grants. To augment the two-year strategic planning project, project costs for a total of six hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. To support the success of that initiative. This amendment has a net zero budget appropriation impact within the Office of Community and Civic Life. And we would update exhibits one through five as needed to reflect this change.
And I will speak to this measure. I'm so excited about the strategic planning process that we're beginning. In the Office of Community and Civic Life and the small grants are the lifeblood of our neighborhood groups. That continue to do incredible work in engaging community members and cleaning up our community with almost no resources. So. I move that we adopt this amendment.
Second.
Commissioner Rubio seconds. Commissioner Hardesty, number one.
Alright, we will move along to Commissioner Hardesty Amendment Number Two. And that is a motion to make the following adjustments to the supplemental budgets proposed in order to carry over unspent funds received in Portland Fire and Rescue. For Portland Street Response's Public Relations Campaign received in the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two fall supplemental budget. We would decrease bureau program expenses in Portland Fire and Rescue's General Fund by two hundred thousand dollars. To carry over resources to fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three to continue the work of Portland Street Response's Public Relations Campaign. Would then increase general fund policy set aside by two hundred thousand dollars for these resources to be carried over and re-appropriated in next year's budget. And then we'd update exhibits one through five as needed to reflect this change. And so this has no impact on contingency. It is taking current year underfunding and carrying it over to next year.
And colleagues, just so, just to add a little bit more detail, I realize that our three-one-one system is doing a community education campaign. Our nine-one-one system needs to do a communication campaign. And so our goal is really to make sure that we're speaking with one voice about what the right number is to call. At the right time for the right first responder. And so I just want you to know that I, this is not just about Portland Street Response. But it's also about making sure that people aren't, fifty percent of our nine-one-one calls do not continue to be for unwanted people. But that people call nine-one-one because there's an emergency happening and we need to send one of our first responders. And so I move this amendment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Hardesty Two.
Moving along to Hardesty Three. With a motion to make the following adjustments to the supplemental budget as proposed. In order to fund community engagement in the Office of Community and Civic Life's director hiring process. We would decrease bureau program expenses in the Office of Community and Civic Life General Fund by thirty thousand dollars. To carry over resources for community engagement efforts related to the hiring process of the Director of Unity and Civic Life. Would then increase general fund policy set aside by thirty thousand dollars for resources to be carried over and re-appropriated in next year's budget. And we would update exhibits one through five as needed to reflect this change. So just as the prior motion, this item does not affect general fund contingency. It takes a projected underspending from the current year and carries it to next year. Commissioner, you are muted.
Thank you. Appreciate that. To this motion, I just want to say that I am really excited about having a community engaged. And helping us find the next director of the Office of Community and Civic Life. Because that bureau is so, it is so critical that they have a community face, that they're, they're, they're facing a community on a regular basis. It's important to me that we have a community process to pick that director. So that's why we want to carry this over. And that's why we're, we're starting this process. So I, I move this amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Rubio seconds. Hardesty Three.
Alright, moving along to Hardesty Four. This is a motion to make the following adjustments to the supplemental budget as proposed. In order to seed a foundation to grow funds to be given to small community organizations working to reduce gun violence in our community. We would unallocate one million dollars that's currently in the general fund policy set aside accounts intended for participatory budgeting pilot. With the houseless community. We would then allocate this funding within the general fund policy set aside for program carryover. In the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget, these funds will be budgeted in special appropriations, general fund, bureau program expenses for competitive process. We would update exhibits one through five as needed to reflect this change. And so this is a draw upon one of those policy set aside accounts that I described in one of my earlier slides.
Thank you, Director Kennard. This particular request is really to work with very small community-based organizations. Who are actually mitigating gun violence in our community. And I'm really excited about seeing how this seed grant. How foundations will use this seed grant to help. What's the word I'm looking for? To help broaden our reach in these dollars. I, I move this amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Ryan for Hardesty Four.
Alright, moving along to our amendments introduced by Commissioner Maps. We have Commissioner Maps One, which is an item that is co-sponsored by Commissioner Ryan. It is a motion to make the following adjustments to the supplemental budget as proposed. To adjust the funding for costs related to the mitigation of excess groundwater in the right-of-way near Providence Park Stadium. From the Bureau of Environmental Services and Bureau of Development Services Resources to the general fund unrestricted contingency. So what we would do is we would reduce bureau program expenses in the Bureau of Environmental Services Sewer System Operating Fund. By three hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and then increase contingency in that same fund to offset the change. We would reduce bureau program expenses in the Bureau of Development Services Development Services Fund by three hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars. And increase contingency in that same fund to offset that change. We would then increase cash transfer expenses from the general fund to the Spectator Venues and Visitor Activities Fund. By a combined seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars. And reduce the general fund unrestricted contingency by that seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars to fund that change. Council would then authorize the chief administrative officer to execute both these funds. And we would update exhibits one through five as needed to reflect this change. So the net of this is a, is a draw on the general fund unrestricted contingency of seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars.
And colleagues, let me place this into context for you. Commissioner Ryan and I are offering this amendment. Because since it was first drafted, we have, we have received communications from the city attorney's office. That advises us that ratepayer dollars cannot be spent on this project. Therefore, we're recommending that instead of funding this through environmental services, we switch this over to the general fund. And I, I so move that we do so.
So, do you want me to add a little bit more, Commissioner Maps?
If you want to, or you can second it. We'll probably discuss it later.
Okay, I second this.
That is Maps Number One, second by Commissioner Ryan.
Alright, moving along to Maps Two. It's a motion to make the following adjustments to the supplemental budget as proposed. In order to cover Water Bureau one-time payment of three thousand dollars to three hundred and twenty DCTU employees and for targeted classification increases. So we would increase bureau program expenses in the Water Operating Fund in the Water Bureau by one million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. To offset the one-time payment of the three thousand dollars to three hundred and twenty DCTU employees and for targeted classification increases. Would then reduce the general fund compensation set aside by one million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars to fund this change. And update exhibits one through five as needed to reflect this change.
Thank you. If I could place this into context for my colleagues. We're bringing this forward because of the unique position the Water Bureau finds itself in, in relationship to DCTU. Of course, you'll all remember that we recently renegotiated the contract with the DCTU. Water is in a special position because about a third of the city's DCTU employees work for water. Water is also in a unique position in that we are a ratepayer bureau. We have several other constraints here that matter a lot. The mayor has given us a directive to not increase. Rates beyond current projections. At the same time, due to the pandemic and. And inflation, the Water Bureau is facing large and unpredictable cost increases. Frankly, if the Water Bureau is forced to pay for these payouts. We will eliminate the last of our financial cushion before we find ourselves in a position where we have to consider raising water rates. Or making some engineering compromises, which I believe would be unwise. And that is why I am moving this amendment.
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Thank you.
This is Maps Number Two.
And then finally, this is the final amendment that I have on my list is Maps Three. And is a motion to make the following adjustments to the supplemental budget as proposed. In order to set aside funding to be granted to the Friends of the Frog Ferry for transit-oriented development impact study and operational support. So we would increase bureau program expenses in special appropriations general fund by two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Then the commissioner in charge of the Bureau of Environmental Services will authorize the release of grant funds to Friends of Frog Ferry. Upon determination that the organization is viable. Friends of Frog Ferry will provide a report assessing the opportunity for transit-oriented development along the Portland Riverfront. And how passenger ferry service might facilitate such development. We would then reduce general fund unrestricted contingency by two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to fund this change. And update exhibits one through five as needed to reflect this change.
Commissioner Hardesty, your hands up.
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Do what you're gonna do.
Alright, um. Colleagues, I'm bringing forward this item because I support the Frog Ferry. That's, Portland is unique given our, our, our location on a river for us not to have a ferry service. Frankly, I believe that someday, and I hope it's soon, the city will have a ferry service. This would make sense because it is an environmentally friendly move. It would contribute to the resiliency of our city in the face of an earthquake and it would help to. Decrease traffic congestion. And for these reasons, I move that we consider this amendment.
Mayor, I move we reject this amendment.
So there's already a motion on the table. There, there is a motion to accept the amendment. And why don't we do this, Commissioner Hardesty, since we're gonna discuss all of these? Why don't I go ahead and second this for the purposes of discussion, noting that you have objections and we'll make sure we have a thorough discussion about this.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. So that's Maps Three.
And that concludes the list of amendments that I am aware of at this time. Are there any other amendments that any commissioner or the mayor would like to put forward? Okay, hearing none, I think we are ready to transition to taking testimony.
Alright, very good. We have eighteen people signed up. Is that right, Kealan?
Yes, that's right.
Yes, that's right.
Very good. And we want to make sure that we hear from everyone that is signed up, which means we will be strictly enforcing the two minute speaking limit for each individual. So please make your points succinctly and upfront. If you haven't already, take a moment to switch to gallery view on your settings. That way you'll be able to, to see yourself as well as the timer. This will allow those testifying to see that timer. It will notify you when 30 seconds remain. It's kind of funny. It's sort of like the Gong Show, if you remember that. So at 30 seconds, you'll hear a Gong and then again with 15 seconds remaining. At the end of the two minutes, the council clerk's office will mute you and then we'll move on to the next speaker. Sorry to be rigorous about that, but we really do want to make sure that everybody gets their say before we have to adjourn today. Kealan, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. First up, we have Alicia Chapman, followed by John Sainsbury and Susan Bladwell. Go ahead, Alicia, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor Wheeler. Thank you, commissioners. My name is Lysia Chapman. I'm the owner and CEO of Willamette Technical Fabricators. I've had the chance to speak with many of you recently as part of the Working Waterfront Coalition. If you're not familiar, our company is a women and minority owned small business specializing in structural metal manufacturing for transportation and clean energy infrastructure. Our primary facility is located on the west side of the St. John's Bridge, directly across from Cathedral Park, which you can see behind me. The proposed launch point for Frog Ferry, which is the budget item I'd like to talk to you all about today. There are many reasons we support a passenger ferry in Portland, but I want to specifically highlight how this project could provide an excellent opportunity to create high skill, high wage and high demand manufacturing jobs for the city. Due to our strategic location, we intend to partner with Frog Ferry to build a home port at our facility where the ferries would initially refuel with R99 renewable clean diesel and eventually recharge their battery electric motors. We'd also provide ongoing maintenance, repair and overhaul services for the fleet and shared office space for the engineers and operators. So in collaboration with Dr. Naya Zaradi, who's the owner of Continuous Solutions, another Portland based woman and minority owned small business that specializes in electric motors and electric propulsion systems for military marine craft, we developed job creation estimates based on the initial vessel designs and our extensive collective experience performing similar scopes of work for government agencies and private river based partners. We estimate 100 FTE or 20 full time employees a year for five years, fully dedicated to this project for welding, machining and fabrication. 10 FTE for mechanical engineering, electrical engineering and quality control and 10 FTE for project management, purchasing and operations. So in addition to that, 120 FTE needed to complete the construction of the fleet, the docks and the home port. We estimate an additional 10 to 20 FTE needed each year for ongoing maintenance as well as piloting and concession jobs. And these are primarily for manufacturing jobs that average $75,000 a year. Working closely with Oregon Tradeswomen and Constructing Hope, other local workforce agencies, at least 50% of those jobs would go to low income women and people of color. Thank you for your support.
Next up, we have John Sainsbury.
Greetings, Mayor Wheeler and commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today on behalf of Frog Ferry. My name is John Sainsbury. I'm the founding and managing partner of Maritime Consulting Partners out of Seattle. We're a consulting firm that aids our clients in developing business strategies for growth and startup in the maritime industry. Our primary focus is on the ferry industry. We've been involved in the design and startup of dozens of ferry systems around the country. And overseas, we've worked with both public and private entities as well as three Ps designing systems that would be both feasible and sustainable for the long term. We've worked for several years with Frog Ferry to analyze the operational feasibility of a ferry system on the Willamette River, developed a pro forma financial model for a phased implementation and advised on the planning efforts for the first phase of that rollout. The Frog Ferry approach has been very measured and diligent, working closely with the communities to build support in developing a strategy to finance the capital with capital and operating expenses. There are federal funds that are designed specifically for assisting ferry projects to acquire and construct capital assets such as vessels and docks. Frog Ferry is a good candidate for these funds as it will serve disadvantaged urban areas and aspires to implement new zero emission technologies that are being developed for use in the maritime industry. We worked with Frog Ferry in the development of a detailed operational feasibility study. The study identified the challenges and barriers a ferry system on the river would face and proposed operational and technological solutions that would overcome those challenges. If implemented properly, it is my opinion that a ferry system in Portland is feasible. Much of our work was performed under stiff grants, our experience in the past, working under similar arrangements with numerous public agencies from around the countries that in advance their reporting and documentation requirements. Unfortunately, this was not our experience with TriMet. This is experience has further
All right, sir, your time is up.
Thank you.
The done has done.
Next. Sorry, just a moment. Next up, we have Susan Bladhome.
Hello, Mayor Wheeler and City Council members. My name is Susan Bladhome and I am the founder of Frog Ferry. Before you today is a request for $225,000. As you've been made aware, the $500,000 ODOT grant you were awarded has not been paid in full by TriMet and we find ourselves in severe financial straits. ODOT is happy with the work we've provided over the course of the two grants we've received and continues to be supportive of our mission. If I were your, in your position, I know I would tend to believe a large transit agency's point of view over that of a small nonprofit. TriMet not paying us for this grant is part of an ongoing effort to shut down our work. Unlike other major river cities that have many transit agencies, we have a monopoly of one. And our history with TriMet has been very rocky with their GMs refusing to meet with us for the past three years. We've put in more than 20 requests to their leadership and they have repeatedly tried to shut down our previous grant awards after ODOT awarded them to us. I know that sounds ludicrous, but that's a fact. If you take them at their word, for which I don't believe they have provided any concrete evidence, you will shut down our amazing grassroots effort. Frog Ferry embodies a community based visionary project to bring a passenger ferry service to Portland. And I wish you could have joined us for the National Ferry Service last fall in New York when we heard one passenger ferry service after another talk about their growth, especially with the federal funding coming on. We've spent five years conducting the necessary feasibility studies while building engagement partnerships with citizens in the region. And now TriMet has put us in a no win position. If you choose to read their inflammatory memo without reading ours, you are giving us no due process. They have a $1.8 billion budget. Financially, we cannot pursue this issue legally with them. We acknowledge absolutely no financial misdoings and consider such accusations slanderous. You have before you the opportunity to help us to move forward. We believe in Portland and we hope you'll help us stay afloat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Noreen Khan, Captain Peter Wilcox and Laura Feldman.
Hi, thank you all today. I'm Noreen and I'd like to talk about Frog Ferry as well. I lead international business and marketing at Portland State with a focus on just regional development and just really supporting local initiatives. I'm born and raised Oregonian, so I'm really excited for tourism and just promoting sustainability. I also was able to further my education and go to Japan and learn more about emergency preparedness and learned a lot about preparing for the big one. And so I felt that the ferry would be a really great addition for helping getting people across the rivers, especially when the bridges go down. And just for overall tourism, I've been loving living in the city for the last seven years from going to school here and now living here as a professional. And I think it'd be a great opportunity to bring in tourism, promote local businesses as well as just like native cultures and also just get people something excited about. And I, every time I bring it up in circles or groups, people seem to be excited about it. And as an advisory board member of Global PDX, it's really cool to see how many people are globally minded or coming to the city and bringing these ideas. And I feel ferry can bring in so many different ideas, not just from the PNW, but also how ferries are used in other locations. So I am super excited for it and I just wanted to share that. So thank you for your time and have a good day.
Next up, we have Captain Peter Wilcox.
Greetings. My name is Peter Will, Captain Peter Wilcox. I'm the director of the Inside Passage Decarbonization Project, which has worked for 15 years to decarbonize and detoxify the inside passage marine ecosystem. Before that, I was fourth term president of Columbia Riverkeeper. For the last four years, I've been proudly serving as an environmental and marine engineering consultant to Frog Ferry. I'm contributing my time to Frog Ferry because a green ferry system on our two iconic rivers would first emit many fewer lifecycle carbon emissions than currently. Over 6,000 metric tons lower over Frog Ferry's two year Cathedral Park Pilot Ferry and many times more than that when the seven vessel full electric system is deployed. Second, Frog Ferry would bring an attractive new green transportation mode and more shoppers and workers to downtown craving these. And third, we'd be following the example of many other cities wisely adding or expanding the highly popular and only mode of public transportation that does not require purchasing or redeveloping an expensive right of way. And that comes with its own dedicated federal funding with a beneficial 80-20% federal local match ratio. When fully completed, the Frog Ferry system would reduce congestion on many of our highways and roads and especially on the region's most congested route, the northern portions of I-5 and the I-5 Bridge. In fact, it's often said that Portland is a bridge city, but mostly it's a car city and primarily a single occupancy car city. With a clean, low carbon electric ferry system as Frog Ferry has been planning with its many stakeholders and with your vote today, you can start turning our car city into a ferry city. Let's work together to get hundreds and eventually thousands of commuters and visitors out of their single occupancy cars and onto quicker, cleaner and more peaceful passenger ferries. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Laura Feldman. Laura, you're muted.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for being here. I was born and raised in North Portland and currently live in the Portsmouth neighborhood. Learning about the Frog Ferry Pilot Project a few years ago was one of the most amazing things I'd heard of in the nine years since I began working as a volunteer on the Portland Harbor Superfund cleanup, which has been going since the year 2000. In short, it made me happy. It made me believe we might just be able as a city to respond rationally, swiftly and efficiently to the global climate crisis in a way that made the city enjoyable to live in again. On April 4th, 2022, the United Nations warned that humanity has less than three years to slash greenhouse gas emissions nearly in half in order to prevent the most catastrophic events of the climate crisis. That's been rolling around in my head. The North Portland Peninsula has some of the worst air in the country. Diesel emissions from trucking, train, shipping industry and the CEI hub with its leaking tanks. Traffic keeps expanding on the peninsula with the St. John's Bridge functioning as a commuter route, making it difficult to go anywhere at certain hours of the day. The Frog Ferry would help alleviate some of this transportation strain while providing a business boost to the neighborhoods on the peninsula. It would help reclaim Portland's green, clean and sustainable identity. And in the long run, make it, make maybe, maybe make it livable again. Other port cities have benefited from having a ferry and I believe Portland can too. I urge you, the ferries, I urge you to honor the ferry's request for this money as a tangible investment for a livable future. Thank you.
Next up, we have Jennifer Vitello, David Barkos and Dan Handelman. Jennifer, are you able to unmute?
Why don't we move on to
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for that. Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. My name is Jennifer Vitello. I'm a resident of the Cathedral Park neighborhood. I want you to know this is truly a grassroots effort. I reached out to Susan Bladhome several years ago as the chair of the Neighborhood Association to say this is something in our neighborhood and out on the peninsula. And there are several reasons and because we're short on time, I'm going to give you the quick and the dirty. One, this is critical infrastructure for North Portland. Two, this is disaster planning at its best. Three, this meets all of the local city and state environmental goals. And four, equity demands it. Going back to the first, this is critical infrastructure. At the present time, the Cathedral Park and St. John's neighborhood alone have over 25,000 people. Those people are stranded out here on a peninsula and we can only get off the peninsula via two bridges. That means that we as neighborhoods disproportionately travel by single occupancy vehicles on a regular basis, which only adds to our environmental and traffic woes. Further, in the event of the big one, we are stranded out here and we as neighborhood associations have discussed this and we're aware of it. These bridges will crack and we're stuck here with no means of transportation. The Frog Ferry helps us address that issue. In terms of environmental, I believe Laura Feldman addressed the issue, but North Portland has some of the worst quality in the entire country. Air quality. And this meets our goals of helping people in North Portland or North Portlanders who are disproportionately people of color and people of lower income to have the opportunity to have clean air and good transportation. Lastly, we do have some of the largest low income housing projects in our neighborhoods, including a new project going in at 8614 North Crawford with 110 new low income units. These people would all be served by Frog Ferry. Thank you.
Next up, we have Dan Handelman. Oh, sorry, David Barkos. My, my mistake.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, I did not prepare as eloquently as some of the other speakers, but I am in support of the Frog Ferry. I have a nonprofit called North Bank Innovations in Southwest Washington and we support entrepreneurship and startup founders. I met and bought home probably about four, four years ago, just after this initiative got started. And it's been one of the most phenomenal ground swell movements that I've seen and support. Being as part of Southwest Washington, one of the things that you would know as well is the commute from Southwest Washington down into Portland, it's approximately 90,000 people pre pandemic. That's a 300% increase over, over the three year period where that was tracked. We are, we are woefully lacking in, in, in transportation options. This would be a vital, vital piece of, of what we could do to start connecting our two cities in, in, in really meaningful ways. You've also seen over the past five years, you've seen the waterfront, Vancouver waterfront absolutely explode. Terminal one is slotted for a dock where the Frog Ferry could actually work a dock and, and bring up people. We've got a public market that's going to be put in place. So the tourism, the vital, you know, way to experience the city and, and the tourism is just, there's, there's nothing else that I've seen starting to really acknowledge the needs of, of our communities like I, like I've seen this initiative. So I urge you to look ahead at what this can be. This can connect campus. This could connect Ridgefield. This can absolutely expand to be a vital piece of a web that connects our, our region in a really meaningful way. So urge you to, to move this and help stop some of the things that TriMet's been stonewalling us on.
Except we have Dan Handelman.
Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. I'm Dan Handelman. I'm speaking today as a member of Portland Cop Watch. It's very hard to, for civilians to understand this budget bump. From what I saw, it looks like there's $1.2 million being cut from the Portland police budget, which is something that we appreciate. In fact, they have to return the money that there was, half the money they're supposed to use to hire 30 police officers. And after this morning's discussion about clean and safe and how the police are understaffed, it's amazing to me that they weren't able to use that money to hire more officers. There's also, there was the program for the retire, rehire program, which no officer has decided to take part in or maybe as many as two out of 41 eligible. So the problem is not throwing more money at the police. The problem is finding ways to make our community safe by giving everybody what they need. And so I just want to make sure that that's understood as you're adopting this budget. There's also an item about adding $500,000 to Office of Management and Finance to move people's belongings away. People living on the streets. It's not clear to me that that's the best way to, to help the people It's not clear to me that that's the best way to help the people living on the streets with a half a million dollars. And there's definitely got to be more strict policies around the private agencies that are being involved in "moving people's things," which often involves throwing them out. Lastly, I am a member of the Police Accountability Commission. This is a tricky thing for me to talk about because I tried asking the staff person there if there was something, money in the budget to support that staff. Of 20 commissioners, I didn't get a response. So I called the Budget Office and said, "Help me walk through this. Is there something in the budget in the Office of Management and Finance to add more staff to the Police Accountability Commission?" And neither of us can find a reference to the commission at all. So I'd like to counsel to state whether or not there's going to be more staff afforded to the Police Accountability Commission, which has, as I said, 20 people at a very short timeline and only one staff person. And thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Willie Levinson, Sarah Taylor, and Dave Singh.
Greetings, City Council. Hope you guys are having a good day. I might be one of the rare people in Portland that is appreciating this cold weather to keep our rivers cool and hopefully cut down our chance of wildfire and smoke in the summertime. Our snowpack is now above 100% in Mount Hood, which is pretty awesome. So there's some silver lining for everybody who's cold weather haters out there. I'm in today for support of the Frog Ferry. Susan Bladholm has become a personal friend, as close as we've worked on river-related issues. And this is, you know, our river is a right-of-way, it's clean transportation, the subsidy per rider is lower than Trinet. And I just have to say, as an activist myself, Susan's acting in an activist role to be able to get this idea off the ground. You know, when you're looking to start a Frog Ferry service or a ferry service, there's not a how to start a ferry service for dummies. I mean, what you do is you just go in and you hustle and you grit, and you try to do something that most cities with navigable waterways have. And the reason why we do is because it's a much higher-quality transportation option. It's a right-of-way. I mean, when we're talking about emergency situations, when our bridges collapse and when our roads are undrivable, this is going to start an infrastructure to allow this to happen. At this point, what Frog Ferry needs to keep it alive is more time. And, you know, from the beginning, this very ambitious thing, time is of the essence. So this is an opportunity to leverage the hard work and brain power of Susan and her team to make this happen. Many thanks.
Next up, we have Sarah Taylor.
Hi, hi, everyone. I'm Sarah Taylor. I'm calling from the Litton neighborhood, representing them. And everything that everybody has said has been wonderful. I just want to say that from a Litton and St. John's point of view, that in the case of a forest fire or an earthquake or a C E I hub event, I think that water evacuation would be the only way to get people out of the area. We can't go up through Forest Park and be very difficult. We know right now, all the roads all around us are shut down because of the storms. So we can see that how easy it would be to be blocked by evacuating people from the road. And I think that the ferry system would be the perfect way to evacuate people. So I hope that unless you've come up with another plan for how to get people off the peninsula or off of the area along Highway 30, that you will give this support to what appears to be the only concrete plan for getting people out in the case of a cascade event or a forest fire. Thank you very much. Bye.
Next up, we have Dave Singh.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Thanks for allowing me to speak today. I am a restaurant owner in central inner-southeast Portland. We obviously have been through some pretty tough times over the last two, going on three years here. I'm proud to say that we've survived that. We've taken advantage of programs as they've come along. Certainly, one of the biggest lifelines we've had is the caps on the delivery service, and I think I have this body to thank for that. I have to say, though, that going forward, that's not going to be enough. That's been enough to sort of keep the fires in my kitchens burning, but it's not going to be sufficient to keep us in business and keep our team working and keep our neighborhood enjoying the service that we have. One of the programs that we've saw especially good sort of benefit from was the Here for Portland activity that the folks put in place last year. We work closely with one of our, one of the partners that we work closely with is the Kudo Payment App. We love the Kudo Payment App. If you come into our restaurant, you'll see we have Kudo plastered all over the restaurant. Really working with them, what it allows us to do is actually get the customers, get new customers into our store. They have a retention program so that we have repeat customers coming back. And customers don't get this part, but the side benefit for us is that we save on credit card fees. So anything we can do to help get more, excuse my language, butts in seats in our restaurant and reduce fees while we're at it, we truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Next up, we have Andy Fraser, followed by Andrea Dolez and Ashley Henry.
Thanks. My name is Andy Fraser. I'm a native Portlander and a local business owner, and I'm here to advocate for the Frog Ferry. When I was a kid growing up in Portland, we were fortunate to have a groundbreaking, innovative mass transit system that was the envy of the country. Trinet was an award-winning system that reflected the forward-thinking of our region. They were successful in taking thousands of cars off the roads and did so in a way that added quality of life to everyone who lived here. Well, I might suggest that it's been a long time since we, as a region, have had the opportunity to lean into a new way of thinking, at least new to us, that would take hundreds, if not eventually thousands, of cars off the roads and add to the quality of life for those who utilize a Frog Ferry. The regional waterways of the Lamont and the Columbia Rivers are unutilized for moving commuter passengers. And when I first heard about the Frog Ferry, I had the same reaction as almost everyone else I've since explained it to. And that is, you know, this is a no-brainer. Why haven't we done this before? Passenger ferry systems have proven valuable in dozens of American cities. And I believe Susan Bladholm has put together a thoughtful, innovative program that is ready to walk before it rots. It's investing in equity and access and will prove to be the crown jewel in Portland's transit system. Susan has had hundreds of meetings and listening sessions with civic groups, environmental teams, governmental leaders, and neighborhood advocates. Her team is prepared to step into a pilot program that'll prove to be, you know, of huge value to the region. In a time when our city government spends 99% of its time reacting to the difficulties that surround us these days, I believe Frog Ferry is a sort of positive idea which would prove extremely valuable to the region for generations. It'll lessen our dependence on fossil fuel. And, you know, we need some good news for the people who would be freed up from their ever-likely commutes and perhaps for the citizens of the region to really believe in. So I stand in support of Frog Ferry, as presented by Commissioner Maps. I hope you will too.
Next up, we have Andrea Dolez.
Hello, Mayor and other members of the council. I am also speaking today in support of the Frog Ferry. I moved to the St. John's neighborhood a little over a year ago now and really realized just how difficult it is to get to downtown. I am a Navy veteran and current senior in accounting and finance at Portland State University. And to get downtown, it takes me approximately an hour, hour and 15 minutes. You know, with the Frog Ferry, I would be able to do that same commute in, you know, 30 minutes as well as not having to drive a vehicle. There are already enough vehicles, you know, in Portland, and there are enough people in Portland and coming to Portland that are going to be bringing their vehicles. And we don't really want any more of those vehicles on the road, like everyone else has been talking about, how we have a lot of single, you know, people who are only in the vehicles. And we just, we really need Frog Ferry to be able to move around. I don't think it's very equitable for people who live in this area to pretty much be forced to either be on a bus for well over an hour or to have to drive in a vehicle and then pay for parking and all of that as well. So I just really think that it really behooves Portland for now and in our future if we really consider the Frog Ferry and other initiatives like the Frog Ferry. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ashley Henry. Ashley, you're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had called another name before me. I apologize. I'm in an airport right now. My flight got delayed. So I'm calling from Dallas, Texas to say how pleased I am to hear from Mr. Singh a moment ago about the benefit of using the Kudo App. For those of you who haven't used it yet, it is a really ingenious solution that was developed by a local tech company. And thanks to Mayor Wheeler and the Action Table, there was a pilot effort back in the fall when PSU students were returning to campus. And we were able to get this, work with, excuse me, people on campus to ensure that students received credits, Kudo credits, that then led to a lot of consumer behavior in the south part of downtown that was beneficial to the businesses down there that had been suffering so much. And it was one of the things that was very inspiring to Green Zebra for reopening their downtown location. And they reported having a very good experience as a result of Kudo. So I'm incredibly hopeful about this allocation. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler, for that. It's really promising that we'll be able to spread it to other parts of the city. And as the gentleman mentioned, it saves an enormous amount in credit card fees for the retailer or the restaurant owner. And so that stays, that money stays in our economy locally rather than going out to an anonymous fintech company of some sort that doesn't, then of course, circulate and benefit in our local economy. So with that, I would just like to also express my admiration for Susan Bladholm and her innovative work with the Frog Ferry. You know, it is, I know all too well, it's difficult to go against the status quo. Incumbents don't really like being challenged. And it can be really difficult to make necessary innovations. And I would encourage you to think about that as you're considering. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Next up, we have Bea Phyllis and Mike Elliott.
Hi, this is Bea. I hope you can hear me. Can you hear me? Good, thank you. So I'm here to ask you to vote in favor of the funding for Frog Ferry to rescue a project that I and many community members have volunteered our time into and would like to see succeed. What I want to point out is that with the coming tolls that will be on I-205 and I-5 by 2024 to 2025, and with our goals to reduce carbon footprint by 45% in 2035 and 80% in 2050, we are looking at solutions that are going to push more and more people towards public transit. But the fact is, those people who are being pushed there are going to be usually amongst our most marginalized communities. Making equity a great concern in terms of how we approach those changes. The fact is, I have ridden the bus back and forth because I'm legally blind. I have a lot of experience with it. And I'm going to tell you, the experience we have today is, at best, gray, bland, and gritty. And forcing marginalized communities to use solutions that are that sort of solution is inherently marginalizing them further. Frog Ferry, on the other hand, offers nature, our beautiful bridges, and fresh air. I'll close by saying, as far as COVID is concerned, outdoor air provokes virus transmission 18.9% less than indoor recirculation. And Frog Ferry would be inherently a more health-safety solution than buses and trains. Thank you.
And our last individual today is Mike Elliott.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Elliott. I serve on the Parks Board and chair its Financial Sustainability Working Group. Today, I am appearing on my own behalf as a community member and am not representing the board or the working group. I'm here to support Commissioner Rubio's amendment that would give back to parks but was set aside for them. The Portland City Council referred the Parks Levy in 2020 in order to preserve and enhance parks and recreation services. The levy was intended to be an incremental resource for incremental service over its five-year life. During the referral process, many stakeholders were concerned about the risk of using the levy as a backdoor to fund other general fund gaps. In response to those concerns, we heard that it was council's intention to continue to treat the general fund component for parks on par with other general fund bureaus. This was a key commitment to getting voters to support the measure. I would like to talk about how Park's request for the compensation set aside relates to that commitment. It's my understanding that the comp set aside is a holdback for general fund bureaus. It isn't really a contingency, so much as it is a figure calculated by the city's Budget Office based off of cost increases to the bureau in the current year. Since it is set aside for bureaus, it is further my understanding that this is usually a pretty standard allocation. As somebody who is concerned about the possible use of the levy to backfill, it's very disturbing that besides parks, all but $27,000 of the other $2.8 million that was requested by the general fund bureaus have been included in the mayor's filing. I would hope that the mayor and council would make sure that every dollar of funding that was intended for parks goes to parks because every dollar that is held back is a dollar of levy that needs to be spent to cover these costs. I want to thank Commissioner Rubio for teeing this key policy question up in her March 17th memo to City Council. And I hope that the council keeps the commitment that was made to voters. Thanks for your time and for the opportunity for me to testify.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. We had one other testifier show up.
Well, they made the effort. Let's let him speak.
Judy Todd.
Hi, Judy.
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you sound great.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm a lifelong resident of Oregon and about a 40-year resident of the Portland area. And I'm just calling in really to encourage deep and thoughtful consideration of the Frog Ferry proposal as another avenue for both thinking outside the box in regards to transportation and the opportunity for really creative solutions to problematic situations, particularly in North Portland, but also ways to get to the river, given that so much of it is not truly accessible to the general citizenry. So much of our waterways in the Portland region are industrial. So much of them are private, that it really leaves us limited access. I think the Frog Ferry has the capacity to do a number of things, and it's going to be a learning curve. It's going to be a learning process. But we know that the times we're in require us to learn new ways of thinking and new ways of living in this region together. So I encourage your consideration, and I appreciate that it's made it this far and is now in front of the Portland City Council. Thank you for your service and thank you for your time.
And that completes testimony.
All right. Thank you, everybody who testified. And again, thank you for all of you who are participating in the Gong Show and those of you who stayed on time in particular. Thank you for that. So now, colleagues, what I would propose, unless somebody has a different idea, I would propose we go back through the amendment list and use that as the basis for asking questions of staff, if that makes sense to people. Saying head nods, good. So why don't we go back to the, I'll do them in the order in which Director Knarbe presented them. We'll start with Mayor number one. This was the motion to include- start with mayor number one. This was the motion to include carryover funds for the hearings office. And again, this was originally submitted as an ARPA ask, but they have unused revenue that they could carry over. Are there any further questions about this item before I call the roll on it? Seeing none, Kealan, can you go ahead and call the roll, please, on mayor number one?
Ryan.
Hi.
Hardisty.
Hi.
Max. Rubio.
Hi.
Wheeler.
Hi. The amendment passes. Mayor number two, this is a motion to include additional funding in the amount of $200,000 for summer events. Are there any further questions? Commissioner Hardisty.
Hi, Mayor. Thank you for, thank you for making this change to your second amendment. I am curious if the expectation is that Venture Portland is going to work with eastside organizations and other culturally specific organizations to make decisions about how that $200,000 is spent? Or is Venture Portland going to make those decisions?
Maybe we could get somebody from my staff to.
We got Sam.
Or both.
I'll defer, let's defer this to Sam.
All right. Hey, Sam.
Mayor Commissioner, thanks for the question, an important one. They are serving as the fiscal agent, so they're not the decider on the events. And you, you city council have funded them already for, in the last annual budget for their business district events. So that's been funded. They've just agreed to be the fiscal agent so that these resources can get out the door quickly and they don't charge us overhead for them.
And how will community-based organizations that are not downtown focused know these funds are available? And how will they get access to these funds, especially if they don't have a relationship with Venture Portland?
Yeah, thanks to the leadership of the Events and Activation Action Table, which has representation from a bunch of groups from around the city, outside the central city is an opportunity, but they also regularly engage based on resources that you and other members of the council have given them on the past. They have a grants program, solicitation for grants. And so we'll be doing outreach, happy to involve your staff in that as well to make sure we're not missing anybody. And then, you know, quickly get the, the awards out the door based on requests from event organizers.
Thank you for that clarification, Sam. I'm still waiting for my briefing on the action tables that we talked about a couple of years back. So I'm really, I guess, I don't know, and I'm a city council member, where those tables are, how people get access to those tables. I'm not quite sure that we're having a reach that we hoped that we would have. So I'm happy to talk to you about this offline, about whether or not, again, I'd love to be briefed on the action tables because I still have not been. But having said that, this money is critical to get out the door this summer for community activities. And I'm happy to work with you and have someone on my staff work with you to figure out how we get the most broad support and opportunities. Because I just, I don't want people to come to us and say, well, how do we get the money? And we don't know. And it's how many bits got. Thank you.
Happy to work with your staff and happy to get that briefing.
Thank you.
Very good. And just for the general public, there's also a webpage on the city of Portland webpage that is dedicated to the action tables. There's some good general information. Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. Any other questions on this item? Kealan, please call the roll on mayor two.
I am.
Yes, in the coldest April week ever, it's kind of exciting to think about any investment towards summer. I vote aye.
Hardisty.
Hi.
Max.
Hi.
Rubio.
Hi.
Wheeler.
Hi. The amendment is approved. Now to Rubio, number one, this is the motion to maximize the 2020 Parks Local Option, loving to meet voter approved goals and make full use of the general fund currently allocated to the bureau. Comments or questions on this item, colleague? Colleagues, sorry, plural. I actually do have a couple of questions. And maybe Director Kennard, this is maybe focused more towards you. And that is just about, what is the policy? Do you feel that CBO and bureaus have a clear policy to guide how we deal with unspent general funds?
So we do. We have a practice, I should say, and, and, and a policy that is, I don't believe enshrined in financial policy, but, but it's practice. And that is, you know, the decision is to put our annual compensation set aside, which is, it's accurate that these are costs that are predicted to be needed as part of the annual budget in each individual bureau. But we put the additional funding for COLA in a compensation set aside account in just in the, in the event to provide essentially additional flexibility for the council, because in, in most years, a number of bureaus do not require all of that resource. And so it's, it's, it's something that bureaus, it is essentially, is assumed to be technical. If yours require that resource in the spring, it is allocated to them. And, and what it means is that our office essentially looks at projections and sees that that resource is truly needed. If it's not needed at the end of the year, it ends up coming back, if it's general fund, it ends up coming back to the general fund anyways. And so that's why that money isn't typically allocated to all bureaus, is if they, if they're not projected to use that resource or need that resource for their personnel salaries, then, then that money ends up falling to balance at the end of the fiscal year and coming back to the general fund. So that is a practice that we deploy. It is a choice that, that the council and the mayor have made to employ that practice. It could be changed. That is, that the overarching decision to change that practice would be a larger discussion, for sure, as would any discussion around sort of what happens at the end of the year. It's a sort of a larger, larger issue. And I believe that what the commissioner is asking for right now is just essentially the allocation of the compensation set aside as it is, as it was presumed to be, as it was budgeted at the beginning of the year.
So does this set, well, maybe, maybe I won't lead with a leading question. I'll just ask, does, does supporting this proposal set a precedent amongst other bureaus that the council will then have to reconcile?
Supporting this proposal does not, it only sets a precedent insofar as it is assumed that, like, it depends on what happens at the end of the year. So, so that, that is the bigger discussion, is what happens at the end of the year. Because as we have projected currently, the bureau does not require these resources to, to end their year in balance. But that is in part because of the merging of both levy resources and general fund resources in the general fund account. And so there's a much larger discussion that could be had and that pertains to what happens at the end of the year.
And thank you for that. And the budgeted personnel costs, which are being funded by this proposed amendment, can you describe what those personnel costs are?
It would be salaries, the cost of supporting employees in the Parks Bureau that are, are providing activities that are jointly supported by general fund and levy resources, salary costs.
So is, is this related to labor agreements? I'm trying to figure out what's driving the increase?
It is. So it's, it's related to the bureaus as they sort of, their budget, that their full staffed budget. So, so again, we would allocate this resource. These are cost of living adjustment increases, not labor increases, but, but cost of living adjustment increases. Were the bureau to be fully staffed throughout the course of the year, they would require this resource to end the year on budget. And so it's the cost of sort of their, their annual budgeted salaries. And I will, I will send it over to Commissioner Rubio, who has her hand raised.
All right, Commissioner Rubio, help me here.
Thank you. And I want to, Mary thinks that Claudio, who is on the line, can be helpful with more detail to answer to your question. Claudio?
Yeah, no, sure. It is a great question. So really, what this covers is costs within the Parks Bureau. We've got currently seventy, a little over $70 million in general fund. And including the levy-supported expenses, we're going to have about $110 million in expenses. And so really, what, what this is, is it's moving, it's moving the allocation that was calculated by CBO and set aside for parks into our budget so that we fully utilize the general fund that was allocated to us. The consequence of not getting it would be utilizing $917,000 more levy this year than, than, than we would otherwise. And so the goal here is to make sure that Parks is getting all of the general fund that was, that's been designated for it and, and maximize the levy over the course of the five years. So it's not specifically associated. We don't have a need right now. The levy could cover it, but if the levy were to cover it, we would be, we would be utilizing the levy where, where otherwise we have general fund that was, that was dedicated to parks. And as Jessica said, in this, you know, the calculation that, that CBO made to determine the 917,000, it's based off of cost of living adjustments for our general fund-funded staff this year and for health benefits cost for our general fund-funded staff this year.
All right. And Claudio, thank you for that. That's actually a very helpful description. I will be honest, I have some concerns about this. There's a balancing act that I'm contemplating. On one hand, I hear the argument with regard to the levy and protecting the accountability of the levy. And that is a very important argument to make, and it's an important value to uphold. On the other hand, these are predictable employee costs, the cost of delivering the services to our parks. And I, you know, I guess I have more of a question mark than a specific concern, but the question mark is, other bureaus have returned unused general fund allocations to the budget. And this is what we rely on as the starting point for our next fiscal year budget. As you just heard, we have about $200,000 in ongoing for the upcoming budget for council priorities. So I, I, yeah, I hear what people are saying with regard to the levy, but I'm also just concerned about the fiscal aspects of this and some of the potential unintended consequences for other bureaus. And I, I feel like we need to have a deeper, more thoughtful conversation about this at some point. And maybe Director Kennard, I'm, I'm looking to you to help us lead that conversation, but I'm not sure today I'm in a position where I'm ready to support this. And with that, I will ask Kealan to call the roll.
If I may.
Oh, yeah. Commissioner Hardisty, sorry.
No worry. If I may ask the question, maybe this is a Director Kennard question. So if we did not do this today, I'm hearing from Claudio that we would not, it's not that we're going to spend the money, but we want, we want it transferred to Parks so that we, it becomes part of the, the overall budget for Parks as it relates to the general fund side, so that the commitment to voters on the other dollars are kept. But the question is, I don't, how much more voter dollars are you spending in this fiscal year? And is that what we're matching? Or are we matching the whole, the whole levy as compared to the ongoing general fund? So I, the mayor confused me. I was, I was right there with Commissioner Rubio until he started asking those questions. Can you help, can either you, Director Kennard or Claudio help me understand that piece?
Yeah, no, I'm happy to jump in. So really, I think it comes down to the, the basic concept. And I think that Commissioner Rubio in her memo to council really tried to clarify this. And I'll, and I'll state it's, the principle of using the general fund first, the general fund that's been allocated to Parks is the, is the, is the resource that has been funding based resource, based services for, you know, for the longest time. The levy is there for, is it the incremental, incremental resource for incremental services? And so we, we expect to fully, fully spend down the entirety of the general fund allocation this year.
By June 1st?
Yes.
Expect this to end all by June 1st?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. But yeah, that's what I was trying to get to. If, so with this allocation, it will be spent by June 1st, and there won't be a carryover general fund from this spring bond?
No, that's correct. So we would be, we would be spending all of the general fund that's been allocated to Parks. Levy would fill the gap between that and our, and the remainder of our expenses. And that, that would preserve levy going forward. So it's really the principle of general fund first, levy filling the gap and providing those incremental services.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Very good. Any further questions on this side? Seeing none, please call the roll.
I am.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Rubio, for bringing this forward. And I also appreciate the meeting I had with you, Todd, and Claudio last, last week. It was, it was kind of dense, and you really stayed with me as I tried to understand what was quite technical. But when I kept reflecting on it, it's that Portlanders overwhelmingly love their parks and they supported this levy. And they, they want to see us improve the services. And this is an incremental step along the way to do that. So I just want to, first of all, thank you for your transparency, how intentional and strategic this is, Commissioner Rubio, to turn the ship, if you will, on your funding model. And I appreciate that you brought this to the dais. I vote aye.
Hardisty.
Yes, thank you so much, Commissioner Rubio, for bringing this amendment forward. And thank you so much, Claudio, for your clarification. I was, I was there like 90%, and then the mayor confused me, like he does sometimes. But I am very happy to support this. I do want voters to know that when the city says that they are going to add value, that they really mean they're going to add value. And I feel better knowing that this is the cost of living increases that we are paying for and not, not additional staff that should be covered by levy expenses. So I'm very happy to vote aye on this amendment.
Max.
Hi.
Rubio.
I want to thank the voters and the Parks Bureau and advocates and this, and this council for supporting Parks and Recreation for community members. And I'm happy that we will be carrying forward that commitment to voters. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
I appreciate this conversation. This is actually helpful. And I appreciate Commissioner Rubio's recognition of our need to have a broader policy conversation as a council about how to deal with unspent general funds. However, as I indicated, I think it's premature to approve this request before having a conversation, as it would set a precedent for a different form of budgeting for this one bureau. And for that reason, I vote no, but the amendment does pass. Let's see, Ryan, amendment number one. Any further questions on the motion to fund the acquisition of land to preserve affordable housing? Looks like we're cleared to go. Please call the roll, Kealan.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardisty.
Hi.
Max.
I want to thank Mr. Ryan for bringing this item forward. I'm going to vote yes on this today. It does frankly feel a little bit like a black box. And I think this is funded out of ARPA funds. And I really wish, would have preferred to see ARPA asks go through a separate process. However, Commissioner Ryan and I have talked about this. I trust him, so I'll vote aye.
Rubio.
Hi.
Wheeler.
I support this. Housing obviously continues to be a critical need in the Portland area. This amendment will allow for affordable housing work to continue. And I commend Commissioner Ryan for bringing this forward. I vote aye. The amendment is approved. Ryan, number two, motion to restore the development services workforce levels. Any further discussion on this item?
Yes, Mayor, I was studying, I was studying to ask Commissioner Ryan some questions. Yes, Mayor, I was studying, I was studying to ask Commissioner Ryan some questions about the fact that this is one bureau that has been protected throughout COVID and everything else. So I'm very concerned about adding fifteen staff at a time when every single bureau in the city of Portland is stretched for additional staff. And there's a lot of development happening, so I don't think the bottleneck is actually slowing down development from happening at the moment. So I just really want to have more information about twelve staff seem to be an awful, twelve staff seem to be a awful lot of staff to be attempted and bring on at one time and especially through a spring budget bump process.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. Just a couple of facts. Yes, there were twelve who were laid off in March of 2021. BDS has drawn down their reserves by thirty point two million to date and forecasting additional eleven point five drawn reserves for twenty-two and twenty-three. I do have Kyle. Kyle, are you here? Looking through the gallery. There you are. Kyle O'Brien from BDS, CFO. Could you add any additional comments? In fact, check me if I can't remember my numbers correctly.
Those numbers are correct. Just to respond to Hardisty's comment about the BDS resources, BDS has actually, you know, been impacted quite heavily by the pandemic and seen a huge drop in revenues. So it's not quite accurate that we haven't been impacted. We did, in fact, reduce our workforce by twelve FTE in March of 2021. And this would restore our staffing to that level that we had before then.
I think we've learned a lot over the last three years since March of 2020 when the pandemic started. And I appreciate the work that Commissioner Ryan and Commissioner Maps have been doing to try to streamline the permitting process. I'm aware that this is the fourth mayor that I'm aware of that's actually tackled permitting at the city of Portland. And I think it's really safe to say that it continues to be a challenge, whether you're just trying to do a repair at your house or you're trying to build multifamily units. I am concerned that twelve employees seem like an awful lot of employees to be bringing on at one time. Again, when we are balancing limited resources and I got to tell you, I could use staff in every one of my, one of my bureaus. And each of my bureaus also have a role in helping the city coming back from this economic devastation that COVID created. So again, it's not personal to BDS, but I am concerned when we continue to carve out special bureaus that for special consideration, when in fact the entire city is impacted by these financial decisions. I would like to have this comment, I wish we had had the conversation through as part of the regular budget process. Because I just feel like the spring bump is not the appropriate time to be adding significant staff in that manner without some reason why that would be so. Thank you.
I have a similar concern. Number one, I didn't know about this one until yesterday. And I was a little surprised to see it come up as part of the spring bump. This has also been submitted by BDS as part of the upcoming fiscal budget that will take up in a matter of days. And like Commissioner Hardisty, I have questions about whether or not these resources can in fact be deployed by the end of this fiscal year. Hiring twelve people. I mean, it is now mid-April and these funds must be expended by the end or committed by the end of this fiscal year. So I personally, at this point, would like to see this continue to be submitted as part of the fiscal budget. I'd opt to preserve our contingency and evaluate this as part of the overall fiscal package. That would be my preference.
Allow me to just continue this conversation for a minute. When we had our conversation about this, both the BDS and then when I was bringing it along to all of my colleagues, I kept asking the question over and over again, how we could get people up and running in time and spend the money, if you will, in time. And I was assured by BDS staff that that was the case. And also they just reminded me over and over again that it takes twelve to eighteen months to get people trained for these positions. And so Kyle or whoever is here from BDS to add more to that, that would be helpful at this moment in time.
I can jump in, Commissioner Ryan. We did lose a lot of staff during the pandemic. In addition to what Kyle described, thirty million dollars were drawn from our reserves. Twelve employees were laid off in March of 2021. We instituted a hiring freeze at the beginning of the pandemic. So, and then we also utilized the safety net ordinance that allowed us to separate a lot of employees using that ordinance and twelve employees left. So actually, the impact to our bureau is more than just twelve that were laid off. It's actually doubled at twenty-four. And right now, we're still drawing on our reserves pretty heavily at the rate of one point two million dollars on average. So that's, that's a pretty heavy draw on our reserves. Like Commissioner Ryan mentioned, for us to bring people in, the recruitment process itself can take up to three months. And then in addition to that, we have the time when we train employees and then they get up to speed and actually can produce quality work. So that, that could take from twelve to eighteen months depending on the classification. The sooner we get those funds, the sooner we can address that uptick in economy and specifically in construction activity that we are expecting to happen. So again, it's all about the timing. The sooner we get those funds, the sooner we start the recruitment, the sooner we fill those positions, we will be in a better position to serve Portland. So the other thing is that the employment market is extremely competitive right now. A lot of our classifications, such as inspectors, plans examiners, those are frontline classifications that provide direct service to our customers, are very difficult to sell. We're competing with a multitude of other jurisdictions and also with the construction industry itself. And we are not in a very privileged position there. So a lot of our, a lot of our recruitments are actually ongoing recruitments. When we keep having those recruitments open so we can have quality candidates. Again, the timing is of essence for us to be able to address that uptick in economic activity and the construction activity that we are expecting to happen in a couple of years.
Commissioner Hardisty, did you have your hand raised again? Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. How many current vacancies do you have? You've got about twenty-seven FTEs that are vacant right now. Is that accurate?
We have quite a number of vacancies at this point and we're actively recruiting for approximately forty of them right now. So we are, again, we are planning to bring staff as soon as we can, train them as soon as we can. So we are in a better position to manage the increased workload that we're expecting to happen once the construction activity recovers from the pandemic and we can see more projects coming in.
Thank you so much for that. So this would be one-time funding, but the expectation would be that it would be ongoing with already forty FT, over almost forty FTE vacant. I see no reason, no way that I would support this in this spring bump.
I just want to add that in the meeting our staffs had this morning, these development forecasts from BDS are aligned with the economic analysis that we received and dialogue with your office mayor. So this is about being as agile as possible to be ready to really focus on economic recovery. And these are the frontline, highly skilled positions that, that are, right now, we're in a deficit. And so that's exactly why this was moved to the urgency of the spring bump.
Well, I sort of have a question for the bureau folks. You're, you're making this sound like a very good thoughtful strategic decision, but the fact of the matter is you did not submit this as part of your fall bump request. This showed up yesterday. What changed?
Thank you, Mayor. We became aware of the, those additional funds that are available in a spring bump quite late in the process. So that's why we changed our strategy to, again, and to be, to be more agile and to get that funding sooner and be prepared sooner. That's why we are asking for those funds in the spring bump. That's the reason why we're kind of late.
All right, and I appreciate that, but I want to make it crystal clear, this is not a candy shop, that any dollar we spend here out of contingency for an ongoing operation is going to fall to the beginning balance of our budget process. And as Director Canard said right up front, we have exactly two hundred thousand dollars in ongoing forecast at this particular moment, so we'd be starting off with a deficit.
As a revenue bureau, you're well aware, you oversaw this bureau, it's chicken and egg. And so, you know, you have to have the people in place with these skills who can help generate the revenue to get the city out of the ditch.
Well, I agree with Commissioner Hardisty on this one. We disagree a lot. But from my perspective on this one, between now and the end of the fiscal year, which is a matter of weeks away at this point, use the vacancies, do your recruiting. And then let's have this conversation. I'm prepared to support this as part of the proposed budget in the spring. I'm just not sure why we need to do it today. The risk to the underlying fiscal structure of the city, I think, is greater at this point than your likelihood to be able to fill these positions. That's just my opinion, but enough of my blathering. Kealan, call the roll.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardisty.
No.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Just want to appreciate Commissioner Ryan for the conversation we had the other day and you answered my questions about this. So I vote aye.
Wheeler.
I vote no for all the reasons that I indicated, but the amendment is adopted. Let's see, where was I? Ryan, number three, a motion to hire staff for multi-bureau process improvement efforts. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Ryan.
Colleagues, thank you for entertaining this amendment. It's really about expediting the work of the permit task force. And we really have a lot of momentum going right now. So it's about moving forward to build that team so that we can stay objective and clear and do the necessary surgery that will finally really do some transformation to how we build this, how we operate the system. How about I?
Hardisty.
With forty current vacancies, twelve just approved for hire, I cannot in good conscience add another three FTE to this bureau's budget. This will become an ongoing expense, another ongoing expense with no resources to pay for. I vote no.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
So this is what the bureau had asked for. And this was the thoughtful, strategic plan going forward to lead into the conversation we were going to have about staffing related to the ongoing budget in a couple of weeks. So this was to begin hiring staff for a multi-bureau process improvement effort around permitting.
And this is also, just for the record, this is on that, so it's not the bureau.
Yeah, understood, but it all, it all gets to the same thing, which is speeding up our permit process and making sure that we're being responsive to the needs of people in the community. And I still think this piece is the most important part, and so I'm going to support it. But you're going to have to, in my opinion, in order for this to be well-utilized resource, you're going to have to fast-track the implementation of this program, given that we are now in the process of doing the hiring as well. So I vote aye and the amendment passes with those reservations now expressed. Commissioner Hardisty, amendment number one, this is a motion to align the Office of Community and Civic Life's carryover request as originally requested for planned strategic planning needs. Any further discussion? I have a couple of comments on this one. Remember Commissioner Hardisty, I was with you a minute ago. So here's my question. So originally, what I'd included in the filing was four hundred thousand dollars to Civic Life for their strategic plan. And then to continue to provide about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding for neighborhood grants. And if I understand what has been done here, the neighborhood grant program has been eliminated.
No, Mayor.
Explain what this does.
Yeah, I'm happy to, Mayor. So four hundred thousand is being carried over for the strategic planning. Two hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine is being carried over for neighborhood small grants for a total of six hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars being carried over.
Okay, so this, so help me understand this, and I think I got it now. So this reallocates two hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars for grants will now be going to the strategic planning process. Is that correct?
No, Mayor. It is still going to small grants. I have Michael Montoya here. If you'd like to ask Director Montoya directly.
Before we get to Director Montoya, could I ask Director Canard, because I'm confused. Can you explain, help me understand? And then if I don't understand, I'll go to Michael.
Yeah, so, so I believe, Commissioner, that the amendment, as I understand it, does actually reallocate the two forty-eight that is going to neighborhood small grants in the amended, in the ordinance. It would take that two forty-eight and reallocate it to the strategic planning process. So the strategic planning process would have six hundred and forty-eight thousand.
Michael Montoya.
My apologies. Excuse me, Mayor. Yes, Michael's here. My apologies. Yes, that is correct. We decided to take that money and put it, and use it as part of the strategic planning process.
Thanks, thanks, Commissioner, and we're muddling through this together, so no worries. Director Montoya, that raises a question for me then, which is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for strategic planning process seems very expensive. Why, why do you need so much for a strategic planning process?
Thank you, Mayor Wheeler, for that important, fair question. Before I explain and answer that, I want to ensure that as part of our regular budget proposal, that is where we originally included the two hundred and forty-eight thousand for small grants for our neighborhood associations and the community-based organizations that rely upon those. So that was our original strategy, was to keep those grants as part of our budget ask, which we will be talking about in a few weeks. Then in our spring bump, we added up the amount that we were going to need for two years' worth of a strategic plan, not just for our bureau, but to systematically and thoughtfully strengthen our engagement infrastructure for the entire city. So as you know, the bureau has had a bumpy year. And that strategic planning process will entail a couple of things that are really important. One is an internal listening process so that we take the incredible talent of equitable engagement that exists in all bureaus in the city and use them to help us think smartly about that engagement infrastructure. Two, we will also do a robust listening of all the incredible talent in our neighborhoods and in our community to, for their ideas to be added to the strategic plan. And three, there isn't a common vocabulary or a common sort of theory of engagement. And so I've partnered with PSU's Hatfield School of Government, one to create a really robust data profile of every neighborhood so that we understood what the city is like in 2020 as compared to 2010. Because what this is all about is ensuring that the comprehensive plan, which tells us what we need to do, this enables us to help figure out how we get there for 2035. The other thing that we're doing to create a common language for the entire city, employees, staff, and residents, is having a convening of local and national experts sometime in the fall or winter to help think through and discuss and deliberate aspects of the ideas that surface in the strategic planning process, but also not reinvent the wheel. There are ideas about. but also, um, not reinvent the wheel. There are ideas about equitable engagement infrastructures that have been, uh, uh, stood up throughout the country. Um, and we would like to learn from those and have us all participate in a conversation, a deep conversation about what the best way to engage with all residents in, um, uh, bringing solutions forward to all the uh, excellent work that is being done across the city. Does that answer your question?
Um, sort of. Um, let, let me, let me, uh, it, it, thank you. Um, let, let me refine this further. So you said it's 648, 459 for a strategic planning process. Then you suggested there might be something else that these dollars are going to. What, what else is it going to beyond a strategic planning process?
I think what, uh, if I may, Michael, uh, Director Montoya, I, I think what Director Montoya said was, uh, the other part is the robust community engagement process. Because at the end, the goal would be to have the city have one voice around civic engagement and how we engage people from different, uh, communities, uh, in a equitable, fair way. Uh, you might remember, remember, was it last budget year or the year before? I feel like I've been here a hundred years now, when there were, uh, fourteen separate efforts to engage with black community members. And we, as a council, talked about, uh, that's gonna make just people, it's gonna annoy people a little bit. Um, if they're constantly getting different calls from different city bureaus about wanting to hear their voice.
Stipulated, and I, I'm, I'm in a hundred percent agreement with you, Commissioner. I'm just trying to figure out why it went from 400 to 650. So, can, Director Montoya, can you explain to me why, you know, we're, we're three quarters of the year, way through the fiscal year, why is there still $250,000 in neighborhood grants unexpended?
Oh, uh, thank you for that clarifying question. This, uh, funding would be carried forward, um, as proposed, um, for next year. Uh, in our proposed budget, this is for next year's small grants. So we have already distributed the small grants that were allocated in this fiscal year. Um, what this, uh, amendment does is, uh, keep this as part of our proposed budget year over year that, that we initiated last year. I think it was Commissioner Maps who proposed it. So we want to continue that 248,000 for small grants in our proposed budget. What this amendment does is add to our 400,000 in strategic planning, uh, another 248,000, which was pulled out um, by the city budget office, so that we can fully fund our work with Portland State and our work with the internal listening and the external listening and design of the strategic planning process, which we believe will take two years. So you really have to cut that in half and say it's $320,000 a year, um, for all of those important efforts. At the end of two years, we will have our strategic plan, which will include an implementation phase. There'll be, everyone will be invited to participate in the coming 12 months. Uh, there'll be reconciliation between what the city, uh, government and employees have to say and the ideas that come from community experts and engagement practitioners as well. So that's, uh, that, that's how it breaks down basically, internal, external, and the PSU collaboration.
Huh, okay. Thank you. I appreciate your, uh, your response. Uh, any further questions from anybody else on this? Um, I, I, I just want to compare this to the Community Safety Division. That's Portland Police Bureau 911, PBM. Uh, they're only asking for 300 for a strategic plan. So I, I'm honestly, I'm just gonna say I'm still confused as to what this strategic plan would include, but I'll take you at your word. You're an honest man. Uh, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Ryan.
I.
Hardisty.
Thank you, Director, uh, Montoya, and thank you, Mayor, for those questions. And I can assure you that, uh, if we don't spend it all, we will be returning it back to the general fund. Um, but we have a solid plan on how to use it. I vote I.
Maps.
Um, I'm uncomfortable diverting dollars that directly benefit the community to a planning process um, and spending $648,000 on our strategic plan, even if it takes two years, also does strike me as just being a lot. For those reasons, I vote no.
Rubio.
I.
Wheeler.
I am supportive of what I included in the original filing, which was to provide $400,000 to Civic Life for their strategic plan and then continue to provide the 248, 459,000 dollar funding for neighborhood grants. Therefore, I vote no, but the amendment passes. Hardisty, number two, motion to carry over unspent funds received in PFR for Portland Street Response's Public Relations Campaign received in the fiscal year 2122 fall bump. Uh, any questions on this one? Call the roll.
Ryan.
I.
Hardisty.
I.
Maps.
I.
Rubio.
I.
Wheeler.
Yes, uh, I support this, and I thank Commissioner Hardisty for bringing it forward. I vote a. Sorry, I lost my place there. The, uh, the amendment is adopted. Uh, Hardisty, number three. Motion to fund community engagement in the Office of Community and Civic Life director hiring process. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ryan.
I.
Hardisty.
I.
Maps.
I.
Rubio.
I.
Wheeler.
I. The amendment is adopted. Hardisty for a motion to cede a foundation to grow funds to be given to small community organizations working to reduce gun violence in our community. Is there any further discussion on this item? I have a comment. Um, I'm obviously supportive of community-based work to reduce gun violence. I joined my council colleagues in supporting several million dollars going towards similar efforts. But I am not prepared to allocate this amount of our very limited ongoing funds from the general fund policy set aside without a better understanding of how funds would specifically be used. I would, however, be interested in reevaluating this package within the fiscal year 2223 budget, understanding how this work supports or works in alignment with the Office of Violence Prevention and the Community Safety Division's programming. If there's no further discussion, please call the roll.
Ryan.
I am very supportive of community-based solutions around gun violence. And I think that it's very important that we're a little more nimble about how we innovate, and I vote I.
Hardisty.
Um, we need to be able to get money out the door into the hands of community-based organizations much sooner than we've been able to do in the past. And we have not, as of yet, created the right vehicle to get those dollars out in a way that actually will have a huge impact on this summer. I'm committed to making that happen, and I vote I.
Maps.
I.
Rubio.
I.
Wheeler.
No. Uh, the amendment passes. Maps, number one, a motion to adjust the funding costs related to the mitigation of excess groundwater in the right-of-way near Providence Park Stadium from BES and BDS to general fund unrestricted contingency. Is there any further discussion on this one?
I have a question, Mayor.
Uh, Commissioner Hardisty.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Maps, can you explain to me why this would not be a ratepayer thing to pay for?
Um, this has nothing to do with BDS or, uh, uh, Environmental Services.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, as in the, the problem that is being fixed is not a sewer problem.
What is the problem? Because the last time I think we talked, nobody knew who was responsible for what was happening. And so somebody's figured out who's responsible for it now, and the general fund is paying for it?
Might be helpful if we have a lawyer in the room or someone from Environmental Services.
Anybody?
I used to watch Perry Mason.
I used to play a lawyer in Salem, but I don't think that counts.
Adriana, you know, you stepping up to say something?
I'm, I'm here, but I can, I can reach out to, um, the attorney that advises on this, if you'd like, and see if they're available.
Well, I, it just seems like this is a issue that should already have resources. I'm just concerned that we're just coming to the general fund without a fuller conversation in a spring bump to fix a problem that the last, again, the last information I had was, it was either, it was between, between three entities, and nobody knew who was at fault, and people were pointing fingers. I don't think the general fund should be the default when people don't know who's at fault.
So I, I can help a little bit on this one, because I, I asked some questions, uh, around, uh, sort of what, what the legal construct. And as I understood it, again, um, you don't want to take legal advice from me, but what I heard and what I understood was that this type of issue that's being discussed here is not, in fact, covered by ratepayer funds. Um, this relates potentially to some construction issues. The bureaus involved have agreed, as I understand it, correct me, Director Kennard, if I'm wrong, to split the cost associated with the remediation of this. Um, is, is that fair?
So, so, uh, I, I don't know that the bureaus have agreed to split the cost. Um, there has been disagreement around both the cause and the potential remediation strategy. Um, Spectator Venues, uh, the Spectator Venues program has commissioned a report that did find that there was, um, likely, uh, uh, that a, a likely cause of the issue was related to a sewer relining project and to, um, the permitting of some nearby development. And so the CBO recommendation was for those two bureaus to split the cost now. Uh, there is still sort of disagreement at, I think, the staff level around, um, the, the eligible use of the resources and the, um, as well as sort of the, the proposed, um, remediation, uh, process. Now, what I would just share is that, that I think everybody's in agreement that remediation needs to happen very quickly.
And, and Director Kennard, it's my understanding that, that the lawyers have quite definitively said that we could not use ratepayer funds for this purpose.
Um, so I think there are differing opinions. The, the attorney that I spoke to, um, said that they, uh, based upon the report that we saw that said it was related to a sewer relining project, said that it's possible. But I do believe that there was another attorney that also, um, felt uncomfortable with the presumption that the Environmental Services engineers, uh, did not, uh, did, did not agree with, with the, um, the assessment.
All right. Commissioner Hardisty, then Commissioner Ryan.
No, I, thank you so much. I, 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 I did remember correctly that there was, uh, uh, there was an assumption that there was some shared responsibility, and it, and is this the entire cost of repair that you're asking a general fund to pay for?
I, I believe that this is the entire cost of remediation as it's been, as it's been proposed. Yes.
Mitigation plan, the mitigation plan is the responsibility of the building owners and not BES or BDS. That's where we're at.
What does that mean as compared to? I don't understand what that means, Commissioner.
Uh, um, I, I, I want to be careful, because as you know, there's, um, some very.
Lawyers involved and, yeah. Well, I just want to make sure that we are not passing on the cost to, to, to general fund when we have bureaus with resources that should pay for, uh, sewer and, and other things. That, 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 that's the only thing I'm trying to figure out. If we're just, if, if we're just saying it's easier to do the general fund, I would disagree. So I just want to make sure that we're making a decision based on facts.
Right.
Just based on trying to get rid of a problem.
Okay. Phil Schott, uh, are you still with us from BDS?
Um, I am, Commissioner Ryan. Uh, if I could speak to that, uh, you're absolutely correct. The mitigation plans are the responsibility of the building owner, and I believe OMF owns the building. Um, as far as BDS goes, our revenues are protected by the state law and, and to be used for activities associated with, um, the, um, permits, building permits, electrical plumbing that the applicant paid for. So, um, in, in this case, my understanding is there is no causal relationship between what's happening and, and on, on that building, that property, and any kind of a permits that BDS issued. So therefore, our, the, the funds that, um, the BDS funds are not an appropriate resource to fund that mitigation. So that's where the bureau stands. And I understand, Jessica, uh, you know, uh, you probably consulted attorneys on that, because it's a state law. We, we cannot just use those funds on something that is not related to the, to the permit that was, that the applicant paid, paid for. Um, as far as, as far as is general fund the appropriate source, that's a different question. But that, but the issue is that BDS funds are not the appropriate source to fund that.
And colleagues, I would just add that, um, Eric Schaffner, I believe his name is, with the city's attorney's office, has advised our office that, um, we should not spend, uh, ratepayer dollars on this project. Um, and frankly, if this council directs me to, to spend dollars, uh, on this project, at the same time the city attorney is telling me not to do that, I don't, I've never been in that situation before. Um, it certainly would represent a paradox and would require, um, I think, significant, um, further discussions amongst council and the city attorney's office.
Could, could I possibly suggest a, a strategy here? Because there's, there's obviously disputes about the causes and disputes about who's responsible and what the strategy is gonna be. And, you know, personally, I, I'd like to make sure there's a consensus amongst the bureaus on any engineering solutions that are ultimately implemented. Uh, Director Kennard, is there some way we could put this in a set aside until those issues are resolved? Because it, it sounds like at some level, we are going to be responsible for paying for this remediation. And I'm hearing from both Commissioners Maps and Ryan that there's a degree of urgency to the problem here. It's a water-related problem getting under foundations and everything else. So that, we, we've all seen that end badly in other communities, and we'd like to get to it. But obviously, there's some unanswered questions that this council really isn't in a position to be able to evaluate, or at least I'm not. Can we put this aside until our engineers work out a solution and then have them come back to us with an agreed-on consensus strategy?
Uh, yes, Mayor. So, so there are two options. One is if, um, council wanted to set the money aside in, in sort of a, a, a fund, a set-aside fund. What that would require is that, that would require, um, the allocation to be brought back to the council before it could be spent or allocated, which is, it, it, which would provide sort of the ultimate level of, um, uh, sort of security for those funds. But on the downside, it would mean, um, that, that it, it would, it would likely delay remediation because you would be required to come back to council for, for, for that allocation. Now, the other option.
Do it on a four-fifths amendment. I mean, if somebody tells us on Friday they want to hear it on a Wednesday, we can do that. We can do, if they tell us on a Monday they want to hear it on a Wednesday, we can do it.
That, that, that's right, Mayor. And then the other option is, um, the way that the amendment language is currently structured essentially delegates, uh, authority to the chief administrative officer to sign off on the, the, uh, it allocates the general fund, but it designates the, the chief administrative officer to sign off on it. So, so it allocates the general.
I'm fine with that, too. I mean, I'll, I'll go with the will of my colleagues, but I, I feel like there needs to be at least an engineering consensus on this before the funds are deployed. And I'm, I'm seeing head nods. Does that, does that work? Um, so maybe?
Mayor, I would just say I would prefer it come back to council before the dollars are released, because, uh, we need to know as council what the consensus is.
Okay, and, and you've, you've heard the imperative that when they're ready to come to council, we're gonna make space for them to be able to come super quickly, even if it means a four-fifths amendment to bring it to council. Can I get four head nods that at least four of us will agree to that? Good, I see that. Um, so, uh, I, I don't know how quite to put that in language, but Director Kennard, can you put that in the appropriate language, please? As an amendment?
Mayor, before we go on, could I just? Mayor, before we go on, could I just ask, yeah, Elshad, did we have engineering consensus?
I am, I'm, I'm not sure about that. I, I think that the, the issue at hand is who pays for it? And, right, so it's, it's, the amendment is about the BDS and BES not paying and then the funds coming from the general fund. I think that's the gist of which you are folks looking into.
Okay, we, we are definitely in a place where we need to pull this and I appreciate the conversation. It is an urgent matter and so this will be coming back soon.
Commissioner Ryan, why, why don't we, we can go ahead and set the funds aside today. We can do that as part of the, the bump process, but I.
Okay.
We, we don't spend it until we hear back on the, the engineering solution, if that works for you.
Yeah, that'll work for me.
Okay, Commissioner Maps?
That sounds like a, a, a great strategy, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Director Kennard, do you want to put some, it looks like you're typing.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to find the amendment language here and I can propose some alternative language here. So right now, what we have in the amendment, we have three bullet, I'm sorry, five bullet points. One of those bullet points, the fourth one says council authorizes, you know what? Give me a moment, let's move to the next one and I will construct some language for this after we talk about the next item.
All right, very good. So Maps, number two, this is a motion to Water Bureau, one-time payment of $3,000 to 320 DCTU employees for targeted classification. Commissioner Horstky?
Thank you, Mayor. Two, I want to speak to this motion. I am very concerned that you talked about setting precedent before. If we approve this, a rate paying, as you know, we set aside the cap target for general fund bureaus for a cost of living increases that are anticipated. I, as Commissioner in charge of PBOC, have incurred over $787,000 in increase because of colars and I have not asked for the general fund to bail us out because I did not think that would be appropriate. And we are not a general fund bureau either, as much as we would probably not want to be. So I, I think that this request should be covered within the budget of the office that submitted this request. And I cannot support this if I am not doing the same thing for a bureau that has a four billion dollar maintenance backlog and no rate payer resources to address those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Horstky. And similarly, while I support the spirit behind this, I understand that the agreement reached with the DCTU negotiations impacts the Water Bureau's bottom line. But I'm also told at this time, and, and if there's somebody from the bureau wants to counter me, I'll certainly hear the argument, that I'm told that there is no impact to customer rates if this is funded internally by the bureau. And, you know, I also want to acknowledge that the impacts will occur over time and we should obviously monitor and reconsider support down the road if it turns out that it does start over time to have an impact on utility rates. But I'm told at least in the near and medium term, it does not, the modeling does not support the idea that it has an impact on rates. And I do see employee costs, again, I'm going to be consistent with what I said last time. I see this as an ongoing cost of operations for the delivery of the service. So I do think it's appropriate for it to be rate payer funded. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, Kealan, please call the roll on Maps number two.
Ryan?
No.
Horstky?
No.
Maps?
Well, colleagues, because of the nature of this contract, it has a particular impact on the Water Bureau. If this amendment fails to pass, we will be undermining the fiscal stability of the Water Bureau. It is true, we can absorb these costs without increasing rates. However, if we have, it also eliminates whatever financial cushion we have. So should we continue to have a problem with inflation or we have an unexpected expensive project? The Water Bureau is in dicey fiscal territory, which is why I vote aye.
Rubio?
I can support the spirit of this and at first I was leaning toward support, but like the, the mayor has articulated for those same reasons. It's my understanding now that the bureau can meet those obligations and I'm very much ready to, to revisit, should, should it become an issue that we need to revisit to address? So I vote no.
Wheeler?
No, the amendment does not pass. Are you ready, Director Kennard, to go back to amendment one? With language?
Yes.
What do you got?
Just a moment.
Wasn't it one step confusing, Director Kennard?
He's doing well. I mean, we've had a long day and she's, she's holding it together, I appreciate it.
Okay, and so this is the, this one was, remind you, this is Maps one. It's a motion to make the following adjustments to the supplemental budget as proposed to adjust the funding for costs related to the mitigation of excess groundwater in the right-of-way near Providence Park Stadium from BES and BDS resources to creating a general fund policy set aside. And what we will do is we will reduce bureau program expenses in the Bureau of Environmental Services Sewer System Operating Fund by $374,482. We will increase contingency in that same fund to offset this change. We will then reduce bureau program expenses in the Bureau of Development Services, Development Services Fund by $374,482. We will increase contingency in the Development Services Fund to offset this change. And then we will allocate $748,964 of general fund unrestricted contingency to the general fund policy set aside, pending agreement on the appropriate sense of funding for, for the Providence Park groundwater remediation and update exhibits one through five as needed to reflect the change.
Excellent, Commissioner Maps, did you have a comment?
So this is being paid for out of the general fund?
So what, yeah, so what we're doing is we are, we are essentially amending the, the funding structure so it's not assumed that it will be funded out of BDS and BES. We have allocated general fund unrestricted contingency, but it is set aside in a policy set aside, which means, means that council, it will need to come back to council before it can be, before it can be allocated.
Okay, that sounds fine to me. Colleagues, I will say, I think we have Mike Jordan over at Environmental Services on the line if we'd like to hear from him, but I'm comfortable with the language in this revised amendment.
Yeah, sure, if, if Michael's, Director Jordan's around, does that work, Director Jordan?
He's under Michelle Rodriguez's.
I see.
There you go.
It's, it's, it's an incredible insult to Michelle, but here we are.
Hey, Mike, I don't know if you've known, did you hear, are you caught up with what's going on? It's been.
Well, a little bit, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, just very briefly. We have advice from City Attorney's Office that if in fact the Bureau of Environmental Services is not a cause of this seepage that needs to be alleviated at Providence Park, it's highly unlikely under the Anderson case that, that an expenditure for this by the Bureau of Environmental Services would be justifiable under Anderson, the Anderson lawsuit case, for those who aren't familiar. There is disagreement between the engineering firm that has been hired to look at this by OMF and the engineers at the Bureau of Environmental Services about whether the work that the environmental services has done is actually a cause of this. And, and there is no conclusive opinion by any engineers that we are. So that was the apprehension that environmental services had about contributing to this solution at Providence Park. And we're very willing with the set aside to work with OMF and the engineers to try and get to a conclusion about this and then have the appropriate financing at that time. But happy to come back to council when we have an answer also.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Maps?
Oh, no.
Okay, thank you, Director Jordan, for that, that's helpful. Elshad, anything else?
No, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, why don't we take up Maps Amendment Number One as very wonderfully sketched out by Director Kennard? Any further discussion, seeing none, please call the roll, Kealan.
Ryan?
Aye.
Horstky?
Aye.
Maps?
Aye.
Rubio?
Aye.
Wheeler?
All right, the amendment passes. We did not, did we take the vote on Amendment Number Two?
Yes, Mayor.
We did, okay, so we're on number three, correct? I'll assume that's a yes. So this is Maps Three, the motion to set aside funding to be granted to the Friends of Frog Ferry for Transit Authority Development Impact Study and Operational Support. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to add a couple of closing thoughts. Every member of this council is familiar with this project and based upon the public testimony we heard today, I think the benefits of it are clear. This is an environmentally friendly move that will get cars off the road and carbon out of the air. It'll contribute to our city's resiliency in the event of an earthquake or a fire. It will reduce traffic congestion. It'll bring high wage, high skilled jobs to our city. It'll promote tourism. We have seen that it has broad-based enthusiastic grassroots support. This project will also promote economic development along our waterfront. It'll expand our public transportation system. These are all good reasons to vote for this project. And there's one other reason, which I just want to highlight before I turn the floor over to Commissioner Horstky. I would say this, the final reason why we should, or I hope you will consider voting for this is that if this amendment fails today, that is likely to be the end of the Frog Ferry project for the foreseeable future. And I think that would be a shame. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and colleagues.
Thank you, Commissioner Maps, Commissioner Horstky.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, we are talking about how we best utilize resources, very limited resources, in an effective and responsible way. First, let me say that a regional ferry system is exciting. I've been excited about it for a long time and my office has been involved in numerous efforts to push this vision forward. I was supportive of the first city allocation of funding in 2019. My team worked with PBOC to sponsor a federal transit authority grant. We have had numerous discussions with Metro about the best path forward for getting the Frog Ferry or the regional transportation plan. And most recently, we had started working on the possibility of having PBOC sponsor Frog Ferry for another grant request for money specifically earmarked in the infrastructure bill for ferry services. I'm sorry, for ferry systems. But that won't pause as we begin to hear about the conflict between TriMet and Frog Ferry surrounding their state grant. Both TriMet and Frog Ferry are telling my office directly conflicting things and leveling very serious accusations at one another. I cannot in good conscience support this budget allocation when both TriMet and Frog Ferry are leveling such serious accusations against each other. Until we have clarity on this situation, this would be an irresponsible use of taxpayer dollars. Overall, I have three concerns regarding this budget amendment. Number one, my top concern is making this allocation before we have clarity on the very serious allegations being made by TriMet and Friends of Frog Ferry. To provide an understanding of these accusations, I want to read an email my office recently received into the public record. This email is a summary of a letter TriMet sent to Friends of Frog Ferry on April 7th. These are bullet points summarizing TriMet's concerns. As my colleagues know, the full letter was sent to all council offices for review prior to this budget amendment being brought forward. The email from TriMet reads as, as, uh, unjust. Reimbursement requests submitted by Friends of Frog Ferry contain invoices that don't add up and keep changing. Ineligible expenses submitted by Friends of Frog Ferry for reimbursement. TriMet can only reimburse for management costs that are reasonable and necessary. Ms. Blath home changed her status as a salary employee to a contractor. As an employee, TriMet reimbursed her salary that she had agreed to with Friends of Frog Ferry of an hourly rate of $74.52. The board then retroactively changed her status from employee to contractor and Blath home sought reimbursement from TriMet at an hourly rate of $200, not the 100 an hour as stated in her recent memo. And as for compensation at the new rate of $200 an hour for work TriMet had already reimbursed her as a salaried, at the salaried rate. In addition, matching funds irregularities. There is a serious concern that because it involves using private foundation monies in ways that do not conform to accounting standards. This has been an extraordinary difficult because the billing and invoicing has shifted and changed frequently. And I do have the whole file that TriMet made available to me, by the way. Another baffling example to TriMet is the recent memo from Friends of Frog Ferry to TriMet and many elected officials that Ms. Blath Holmes said she billed at $100 an hour when she shifted this to $200 an hour. To us, this is another example of how this whole situation does not add up. End of email. So that's concern number one. Concern number two, the next challenge is capacity of PBOC. This is a transportation project and developing it will require commitment of resources from PBOC. For example, Metro has commented that PBOC would need to be involved in getting the project onto the regional transportation plan and many grants will look to see if the project is on a local transportation project priority list and receiving staff support from PBOC. I realize there's an interest in seeing PBOC tackle transformative transportation projects. The challenge is that the bureau is already tackling numerous transformative transportation projects. 82nd Avenue, the I-5 Bridge replacement, the Rose Quarter congestion pricing, numerous safety and road improvements in East Portland and the pilots we recently completed around community-driven safety developments. Adding to the challenge of pushing another project is not only one of capacity, but also one of priority. Frog Ferry will offer services to some areas that are currently low service, but when analyzing the Frog Ferry with the bureau's equity lens, they are doubtful that it will rise to the level of the projects just highlighted. My final concern is a lack of multi-jurisdictional support. As it stands now, TriMet is actively antagonistic to the project. The state is grappling with a multi-departmental headache caused by the TriMet and Frog Ferry dispute. And my office has received no real signs of interest to be involved by the county or Metro. I am concerned that the city will devote resources to a project that will ultimately require multi-jurisdictional support only to find it lacking as we move forward. I know there are a lot of passionate people at Frog Ferry working on this and I also know that there are a lot of people passionately, passionate about improving transit services at TriMet. And a lot of people at the city want to see an exciting new transit option provided. I am one of those people. I am one of those people. But as this project stands now, I cannot support staff or monetary uh allocations to a project facing these challenges and accusations. At the very least, I think it would be responsible for this city council to wait until the TriMet and Frog Ferry conflict is resolved to a level of clarity that ensures we do not take a vote. We could end up regretting. Longer term, there needs to be a serious analysis of resources available, both money and staff time to support this project, especially if no other jurisdictional partners indicate interest. For all these reasons, I will be voting no on this budget amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty, and um I I would ask Commissioner Maps, you know, I I share the concerns that Commissioner Hardesty has around the legal and financial disputes. And we've run into this problem before where we've supported organizations and it turns out they have substantial legal or financial issues and we get drawn into it. Is there a way that you would accept a condition that the parties resolve their legal and financial disputes prior to funds being allocated?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I would accept that compromise.
Director Hardesty, Commissioner Hardesty?
Uh, Mayor, that only addresses one of my concerns. I had three. Regardless of who we say runs this, Frog Ferry cannot do anything without support from P-Bot staff or me, because I'm the uh city's representative on the uh or or on the policy boards or J-PAC and the other policy boards that will make decisions about whether this project moves forward. Again, this is premature, and it is not an appropriate time for us to be putting money aside for this purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty. Um, Commissioner Maps, I heard you, at least on the issue of legal and financial issues, you would be willing to accept a friendly amendment to the amendment which puts it aside until those issues are resolved?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would.
How do you respond to Commissioner Hardesty's comments with regard to the needs of city resources being deployed in the bureaus to support this program?
Um, well, I I believe this, uh, we have had votes and discussions about the Frog Ferry before. I've talked to each and every one of you about this. I believe that each, I believe you when you tell me and tell uh the people of Portland that you support bringing your ferry to town. Uh, um, and I I would, I would be happy to work with you to make sure that uh the city walks its talk and makes this a priority.
Um, again, it is not on any transportation agenda at this moment. Um, and it would require a Huculainian effort to get it on any fast track. So unless you're planning to write a grant uh to get the money from the federal government and then managing that grant, uh, there is no pathway forward uh in P-Bot at this moment. And these issues are resolved. So I, again, I mean, giving money to, uh, I I'll just stop there.
Sure. And and Commissioner Hardesty, it's it's my understanding that one of the things that what that this uh um funding that's on the table would provide is an opportunity uh for the Frog Ferry group to continue to pursue federal grants. Um, and there are federal grants that specifically focus on ferries, so. Uh, um, and Portland is uh unique, given our footprint that we don't have a ferry.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Maps, and this is not for you. This is for the listening audience. I I appreciate your comments. Uh, but it it doesn't just magically get funded by the federal government. There must be a local partner. Uh, there is no local partner at this moment. Um, and so how do you suggest they get money from the federal government? Wh- what's your plan on that?
Well, I do think that we've had some discussions on this council about uh um OMF or the city you were serving as a fiscal agent, should we get to that point?
So I think there's a lack of understanding that this is a transportation project. And no matter how you frame it, no matter how you uh put bows on it, if this project is to move forward, it can only move forward as a transportation project. And I see no path forward until these legal issues have been resolved. Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Hardesty, I think we are, the mayor put forward a friendly amendment that said, uh, maybe we could put these dollars in a set aside until we get these uh this conflict between TriMet and the Frog Ferry uh um resolved. Uh, you are the commissioner in charge of transportation. So if you're saying that there's no conditions under which you'll support this, but you have to support this in order for this to move forward, I accept that. You know, I'm disappointed in that and that choice, but um I will accept it.
I understand you or no one else has had any conversations with me about moving forward a new transportation project based on all the transportation projects I currently have on my plate. Had you come and talked to me, we'd have had this conversation a long time ago, but you chose not to do that and move forward. So that's why we're having this conversation now on the public record. Regardless of how you frame this, this is a transportation project. And you're asking us to give a nonprofit money to save them as compared to to do some work that actually leads to a transportation project that can be supported. And that's a, that's a different kind of ask in my mind uh than what this council traditionally uh puts our limited resources behind.
All right, I think we've heard all sides. And just to confirm, Commissioner Maps, you have accepted the friendly amendment that we will put this in a lockbox until the legal and financial issues are resolved?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
And I've I've heard Commissioner Hardesty's concerns as well, and I just want to acknowledge those as being important to any future discussions about this project. Director Kennard, what is the best way to put those funds in a lockbox until those legal and financial issues are resolved?
Uh, so I think we would pursue a similar strategy to what we just proposed for the Providence Park issue. Um, so I have some language that would amend the allocation from being appropriated directly to special appropriations, but to a policy set aside account um so that it would return to the council for a vote. Does that, is that aligned with what you were thinking, or did you want to go the route of?
That's fine. I'd like it to come back to council. I think we have to make that decision. I don't, I don't want to allocate, I don't want to delegate that decision.
Okay, so here's the language. Uh, motion to make the following adjustments to the supplemental budget as proposed in order to set aside funding uh in a policy set aside account to be granted at a future time to the Friends of the Frog Ferry for transit-oriented development impact study and operational support. So what we would be doing is increasing general fund policy set aside by two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for Friends of the Frog Ferry. Funding will be released upon approval by the council, following the provision of additional information and financial and legal assurances to the council around the viability of the organization. We would then reduce general fund unrestricted contingency by two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to fund this change and update exhibits one through five as needed to reflect this change.
Works for me. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Actually, I I.
Uh, Mr. Ryan, go ahead.
Well, my question is this. So my experience in the world of building things in the community sector is that you have to hit a certain threshold before you can leverage a match. And it, the way that was proposed, there were a lot of legal uh issues, but we're also talking about um making, you know, helping them be whole, and they need more partners. So in the dialogue as we move this forward, I just want to put on public record that for me, it would be important to see that the good people in the Frog Frog Ferry network um hit a certain threshold of of private funds that they've raised. Um, and so I'm a little bit lost on what we're voting on right now, is what I'm really saying. And I wanted to get a little bit more into the um operational side of what would be the threshold that would release that money, about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Is it just around legal? Is that what I'm hearing from you, Mayor Wheeler?
No, there's financial issues as well. I want to see what their plan is going for. Commissioner Hardesty made some points around. Um, yeah, if you're going to be a fiscal sponsor, I want to know what else is in the offing. And if they're going to apply for grants, I want to know where their source of match is going to be, as Commissioner Hardesty indicated. Uh, basically, I I would like to see a full game plan. I presume they have that. But the, you know, the the ask right now is slightly narrower than that. But that that's when I say I I expanded this beyond legal issues to include financial issues. Commissioner Rubio?
So my question is, then, what would preclude us from just asking them to come back once they resolve it instead of, why do we need an action right now? I just feel like I don't have enough information to really, I would need a day or something to to think about what you're proposing and I I and I'm a former nonprofit director, and this is very unusual. And that's what gives me a little bit of uh not feeling good uh in terms of, you know, creating a double standard that we hold other nonprofits that we do work with the city to. And I fully support Frog Ferry, and I love the vision. And I really respect Susan. This is just something that right now doesn't feel quite ready, given what we just learned a couple days ago. And so I I want to give them that chance to make that case and then for us to have a conversation and then and then, you know, entertain um uh an idea to support them. I think, I just feel like it's very quickly, I'm not tracking all the, like, I I don't know that I'm going to make a good decision, like, with just doing it on the fly like this. But that's just me.
Because the root cause, the root problem here is the pending uh fiscal insolvency, right? And the last thing we want to do is, um, anyway, this is complex. And it's also been quite a long day.
No question. Uh, Commissioner Rubio and then Hardesty.
Uh, you didn't put your hand up. Um, Mayor, I'm just going to recommend that um that we just vote this uh measure up or down and not try to fix a broken uh proposal. Um, because honestly, I think once we get the information that you've asked for, this is not a lot of money. They could come back to the city council at any time and ask for these dollars. And uh and we don't have to have a special allocation set aside for that. I I think that these questions are way too big for us to be kind of just saying, okay, well, we'll see what comes up later. Um, but again, I I, like Commissioner Rubio, I support the vision of Frog Ferry. But I also know, again, as the transportation commissioner, um, I was not talk, I I was not consult, we didn't work together to come up with a plan. Um, in fact, uh, I, uh, it it didn't happen. And so um, I I will be a no on this, no matter how we pretty it up. I just think that it's not the, it's not, it it does, it's such a bad precedent for council if we move forward and allocate this money in any way, shape, or fun, or 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 fun at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty. Uh, Commissioner Maps, I guess I turn it to you. If I'm reading the body language here, there's a decision that you need to make with regard to whether we move forward with the vote or whether you withdraw it and go back and work with the Frog Ferry folks, but I'll leave that to your discretion.
Let's take the vote.
Healan, please call the roll.
Ryan.
First of all, I just want to say that I see the pragmatic vision uh to move this successfully to implementation. I think we all want this. I haven't, I don't, I don't think there's one colleague that's not enthusiastically supportive of the Frog Ferry. Um, I do think we're taking a pause for that cause at the moment so we can recast this project. And of course, we're going to build on the shoulders of the great work that Susan's done. I'm a big supporter of the work that you've done and your team of volunteers. You know, having um a background of working as an executive director in the nonprofit world, um, the challenges of fundraising, the challenges of doing a big, bold uh necessary project like this is is complex. And I believe that there's merit behind this idea, but I would be in favor of the resolution to support Frog Ferry as previously, as it was previously proposed. But but I'm just confident that um the organization of the Friends of Frog Ferry should be able to utilize their base, um, keep them engaged, keep them involved in this uh moving forward. And we have a lot of dots to connect, but I'm really clear that we can bring this back. And I actually appreciated the dialogue between the transportation commissioner and Commissioner Maps, who's um heroically bringing this forward today. Uh, we want this, Portlanders want this, but we would regret, based on the information that was presented to us um in emails and was read, some of those um comments were read by Commissioner Hardesty today. And we regret being, uh, we regret that if we if we supported it at this moment, at this time. So at this moment, on this particular moment in time, I vote no and look forward to it coming back.
Hardesty.
Since twenty nineteen, I've been a strong supporter of Frog Ferry. I cannot in good conscience give public dollars to an organization that is facing the kind of uh issues that uh they are facing right now with TriMet. So I vote no.
Um, colleagues, if this vote goes the way I expect it to go, um, this is a very sad day for Portland. Um, if we fail to pass this amendment, I expect the Frog Ferry project to die, which will be a setback for our environmental goals. It will be a setback for our resiliency efforts. It'll be a setback for efforts to uh solve traffic congestion. Uh, we will uh be taking a pass on bringing high-skill highways jobs to the city. Uh, we have a great opportunity here to promote and support tourism, and that will also go away. Um, I think we'll also support many Portlanders. We're excited about this project. Uh, we will take a pass uh and this is an opportunity to develop our waterfront. Um, and we will lose an opportunity to um support the expansion of our public transportation system. I think that's a shame. On the other hand, I am confident that one day there will be a ferry here in Portland. I want to thank the hundreds of Portlanders who have worked on the Frog Ferry project over many years to make this happen. You guys did great. Um, and I wish I could have done better for you today. Uh, um, but it is what it is. Um, and for these reasons, I vote aye.
Rubio.
Um, again, I just want to start again by saying that I really truly support Frog Ferry project. I, you know, I support the vision since I met and talked to Susan two years ago. And um I do believe that this project would be will be good for Portland. And um I I just have to reconcile what I'm also here to do, which is to ensure that we, that we uh meet certain um obligations to make intercage stewardship of public resources and giving the timing of information. We don't have the time to sit down and unpack this directly, um, as we probably would in normal times. It, and to echo what uh Commissioner Ryan said, at this moment, it's, right now, it doesn't get us there. Uh, but I want to be clear, for me, it's about equitable application of a standard and not about the projects. And um I remain supportive of this growing organization, and I'm open again to considering in the future. Um, uh, and maybe the near future of uh at at a budget, critical budget juncture when these things are ready to move forward and welcome the conversation. Um, and I also just want to say that as a former nonprofit director, um, there are a lot of stressful times when you're managing a growing organization and um capacity and learning the ropes and learning how to manage um carrying forward that vision at the same time while having to do all of the back-of-house functions. That's a lot of work. And so there's a recognition, at least by a lot of us on this council, about what that means to to do. So I just want to say that to you because um we see you and we see that. So um just want you to know, you know, in the meantime, my office and Parks Bureau stand ready to help with the leasing of the docks um when the time comes. And uh, I hope that I see this project back again soon. I vote no.
Wheeler.
Well, I first of all, uh, want to thank Susan Blathhome for being here for her tireless leadership of this project. She's really done a fantastic job. And Susan, I have a tremendous amount of respect for you and your vision, your leadership. Uh, Commissioner Maps, thank you for bringing this forward. Uh, you made a yeoman's effort. Um, I absolutely was prepared to support this with the uh with the lockbox, with the assumption that the legal and the financial issues would be resolved prior to any taxpayer funds going into this project to a greater degree. Uh, obviously, um, that will not happen. I'm voting aye, uh, but the the nays have it today. Uh, that being said, I would invite Susan and Frog Ferry to come back to the city council at a later date. I believe these issues will be resolved with TriMet, and I would look forward to. And I I would look forward to to hearing more from the folks at Frog Ferry, should they choose to come back to the city council on a different day. Uh and I just want to extend that invitation personally to you, Susan, and uh express my uh desire to to have that opportunity should should it arise. Uh I vote aye, but the amendment does not pass. Does that complete all of the amendments or did I miss some?
That completes the amendments, Mayor.
All right, very good. So we have made it to the end of the amendments. Now we must vote on the main motion as amended. This is, of course, an emergency ordinance. Is there any further discussion to the main motion? Seeing none, please call the roll on the main motion as amended.
Brian?
Aye.
Hardisty?
Aye.
Maps?
Aye.
Rubio?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Colleagues, this was a long day. We we started early today and we had no shortage of complex and difficult issues. And I just want to reflect on the day for a moment. Uh we had some really good debate. Something that unfortunately you don't always see in a democracy. This city council, as much crap as we take from everybody about everything, we debated the issues today. We had legitimate and even forceful differences of opinion on any number of issues, not just this afternoon, but during this morning session as well. And I feel at the end of this day to be very proud to be a member of this city council, where we can have really fact-based tough debates, be really honest with each other, throw different ideas back and forth, have disagreements and split votes. And we had plenty of those today on a whole bunch of different issues uh this morning as well as this afternoon. And yet, here we are, uh colleagues who still respect each other, even though we have different ideas, perspectives, and backgrounds. We bring different things to the table. And so I just wanted to reflect uh as I take this vote in favor of the main motion as amended, that uh today was really a good day for local democracy. And I have you and your staffs to thank for that. Director Canard, as always, uh thank you for your stalwart leadership and uh your drafting skills as well as your financial skills. Uh I hate to press you one more time, but could you sort of give us the summary of where we are right now with regard to the expenditures in the spring bump? And could you tell us a little bit about carryover?
Question of order, Mayor. Did we, we didn't vote on the whole package yet. Is that, are you, are we going to do that today?
Oh, did I, did I actually forget to call the roll?
Yes.
Well, that's, isn't that interesting? So I gave this great speech and I didn't, man. Um I picked, I picked the wrong day to give up coffee. That's all I can say. Uh so why don't we call the roll first on the main motion as amended? I thought we did.
Mayor, I think we did. Um I would, I would ask uh Legal to confirm. I thought we did vote on the package as amended.
Yeah, I did too.
We're actually just waiting.
Absolutely not.
My bad. So it's it's not you, it's me.
I I, my count shows that we're still waiting for the mayor's vote.
Oh, I thought I said I support it. I vote aye.
Oh, I might have lost it in your speech. I apologize. Now, now we're done.
Uh so yeah, absolutely. I I vote aye on the package. I support the package as amended. I vote aye. I am a yes vote. And the uh the main motion passes as amended. And the ordinance is adopted. Thank you. So back to Director Canard. Uh can you sort of give us a summary of where we are at the end of the spring bump and what that portends for carryover into the budget process, please?
Yes. Um so um we started in terms of general fund carryover. There were just a couple of small uh changes there. We started with about sixteen million dollars of general fund carryover. And I believe we landed um at around six sixteen point two three, I believe. I'll have to double check that, but that has no impact on our contingency accounts. We just added a couple of carryovers to to that um through the Hardisty amendments. And then in terms of our overall contingency accounts, where we started at around nine point five million um uh for our sort of unrestricted and personnel contingency, where we stand right now after the amendments is about two point two six million uh available in unrestricted contingency or personnel contingency. And then we have an addition of, um let's see, an addition of uh seven hundred and forty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-four to policy set aside for Providence Park. Um but that was offset in our policy set aside by a draw on policy set aside of a million dollars for um the front, that would was drawn from the Houseless Participatory Budgeting set aside per Commissioner Hardisty's amendment.
Okay, very good. Thank you for being on the ball. Uh colleagues, thank you. Appreciate it. Uh have a fantastic evening. We are adjourned.